Most of you know this is supposed to be an informal discussion so that we can get into a variety of points, a little bit more details. So hopefully that makes sense to you and you do have a quorum. Mr. Udi, Mr. Anderson, he will be here. Mr. Rivers, we're not sure where he is anyway. Okay, if we could have the invocation.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and discuss the business of the district. We just pray that you guide and direct us, lead us to make decisions in the best interest of children and for our staff and families. Father, we just ask that you help us have wisdom in what we're doing, in Jesus' name.
Okay, I also would like to, on behalf of the board, for Mr. Udi to express our feelings. I can't imagine, but we all think about you and Frank and you. Thank you. Thank you, Father. Okay. I'm glad to believe this. The agenda and the need for approval of this, we want to move the facility reorganization plan up to the budget information, because this presentation will be. And the reason for that is that Mr. Richardson is going to have to leave by six o'clock, and we feel that the reorganization discussion would probably be a better use of his time since he's been working on the budget. So, and then the other thing is that we are not going to have an executive session tonight. So do I have a motion to approve those adjustments to the agenda? So, it's a motion. Mr. Rivers, second, please. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Good evening, Mr. Rivers.
Hi.
It's delightful to see you tonight. We were wondering if you were going to make it.
Oh, I was just last minute work getting ready, me.
Okay, well, the brides are here. Okay, we'll begin with a couple of action items. Turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we bring before you two action items. The first, that was a board doc, contract for lawn maintenance. And the second is our second summer testing opportunity. I'd like to afford, Dr. Richardson, the opportunity just to briefly speak to what you probably saw regarding the lawn maintenance contract, because the contract is over $100,000. Remember, we modified that policy earlier this year. I now need board approval. And every year, the Department of Public Instruction requires boards to approve the plan for second summer testing, so that's why we're bringing it over tonight. Mr. Rivers?
Thank you, Dr. Clinton. I'll just take a brief, one or two-minute overview and then answer any questions you might have. In years past, we have done an annual contract for our lawn maintenance. And one of the things that we've noticed over the last year and a half is that the scope of their work has been a little bit lacking. The schools have not been up to the level that we would like to see. So, we put our work out again for bid this spring as we normally did, but we changed the scope of work to include some additional items that should, you know, enhance the curb appeal and such at our schools. We've added some things like doing herbicide in all of our parking lots, adding flowerbeds to the front of the school and your signage, making sure all the shrubs are properly trimmed, the trees are lemmed, that we have leaf removal, and that the seeding and fertilizing of herbs as well. There are also going to be hard edging along where the grass meets in concrete, from that sort of messy, creepy look that we have that's going on in a lot of our schools. We advertised these bids in two newspapers, and then we called all of landscaping companies in Bramble County and a few in the adjacent counties. We did make a special attempt to reach out to some minority-owned businesses. We had about a dozen or so companies come and do the walkthroughs that we provided, and we had eight companies that submitted bids. We clustered these, the work into seven groups. We kind of grouped the schools into two or three, so that we could, instead of just one large job for everyone, we focused really, too much work for one company anyway. And we also added the cutting of the athletic fields and snow removal to this as well. So, we, in this contract, are asking that the board approve the bids for three separate companies. We came to these conclusions based on a rubric that maintenance staff, myself, and Mr. Richardson used to choose. So, you know, just some of the things that were included were the price, the customer service, and we never, you know, some of these companies we've done work with, we called in references, whether or not they were local, and of course, if any of them were minority-owned. So, you have with you today the contracts for the three companies that represent what we believe will be the best for our school this fall. Board members, questions?
I have a number of questions. The $800,000 seems to be really high. Has there been any thought to hiring, let's say, three permanent employees, buying four top-of-the-line industrial, heavy-duty lawn mowers, zero return, give them $10,000 each, $40,000 truck, trailer, $100,000? Three employees, maybe $200,000, $300,000, but our go-ahead costs are only employees higher, because those lawn mowers should last 10 years. When they're not mowing the grass in the spring, summer, and fall, they could be assigned to the maintenance, they should be in the maintenance department, go back to the maintenance department to help plumbing assistant, electrician's assistant, hold the wires, run the wires, handy tools, or they may be skilled enough to maintain these people on their own. That would be $300,000. And I figured out the three employees and 20 campuses, four schools a day, in a five-day work week, keep mowing once a week. Has there been any thought to that? $800,000 just seems way outrageous to me.
There's been a lot of thought. And in fact, we actually used to do that. About 11 years ago, we stopped in being in the business of cutting our own grass because it was so expensive. I talked with Jack Blackwell, who worked here during that time, and we would probably need three full-time crews in order to keep up with all the work during the summer months. We have over 600 acres of campuses. So, we've run the math, and we really don't think we can match the $258,000 a year that these contracts represent. That figure you mentioned is over a three-year period, three-year period. So, for the cost of hiring, probably you'd need at least six employees for three crews. You know, that's full-time. The equipment, we would need vehicles, we would need trailers, we would need all the cutting equipment. This is going to be much more economical, in our opinion.
If we invested in the cutting equipment, say, $100,000, and trucks and trailers were full, and let's say we have six employees, so we're talking probably $300,000, $350,000. Our annual going-forward cost would only be employees. So, you're saying $258,000 a year, but then what do they do from November through March?
So, just employ, say, those base salary employees, you'd probably be looking at about, if we hired six, which would, we would need three crews, and that would be difficult to manage during the summer months. That would probably be upwards of $220,000, $240,000 a year for salaries and benefits. So, that alone would be almost this price.
Yeah, but we have those six people in the off-season to work in our maintenance department to help paint schools, fix schools, plant shrubbery. One of the problems with our schools is the curb appeal is terrible.
It is.
But this contract doesn't include planting shrubbery, doing those other kind of things. So, if we have our own people.
It does.
Planting shrubbery.
Flowerbeds, mulching, includes all of that. This is why the price has increased. We were paying an average of, Mr. Anderson looked it up for me, about $140,000, $140,000. We're on track this year to spend almost $180,000. It just, a lot of it depends, too, on the, on the, how much terrain we get and that type of stuff.
Oh, I understand. I'm just warning you, the mowing season basically is March through November, maybe early November. So, you've got those other five months where we had these employees. I keep hearing we're going to get six maintenance employees and that, you know, we're having to, we have to contract out things and all that. If we doubled, if we had our own employees who were, did the lawn service during the cutting months, and did, when they weren't, maybe mulching in December or something, they're helping in the maintenance department, could we not accrue a savings year? Could we not do more for our schools and not have to contract it out?
Well...
Because we're paying $258,000 for basically six months of the year.
I mean, right now, we're kind of just throwing out figures, so it would take a lot of research to do that. Don't forget that we would need to buy three vehicles and trailers.
Right.
We would need to staff all these employees, and we would need to train them, and we would need to supervise it, so...
I don't think you need to, I mean, if you're hiring somebody to, you know, think there would not, there would be minimum training to cut grass, and you want to hire a lead who, you know, knows more about planting, shrubbery, and that type of stuff, but...
Would you like to make your motion in terms of what your, your...
Before you do that, I have some...
Let me, I see if you would even want to. Do you have, I mean, what do you want to do at this point?
Well, I just think that the, it's a lot of money, and we're trying to look to save every penny we can save. If we can, I think we're going to need to go through and scrub almost every item in our budget, and we're going to have to find ways to cut. And if we, if we can save some money here, then I think that's a good start.
So, do you, so, come back to your guess, Mr. Anderson.
Well, first thing I want to say is, Mr. Udi indicated that he was going to get a little late, but this was one of the items that he asked me to mention on his behalf, that he has real concerns about spending near the $800,000 for mowing the lawn or cutting the grass. So, if there's a motion, and if it goes now, based on the composition of the board, without Mr. Udi here having that concern, that could impact the outcome of the motion. So, if you want to have a motion, I would ask you to delay it until he gets here to see exactly what his views are. But, the question that I had, I have a couple of questions. A, does this fit in work session, or is this something that should be brought up to a regular meeting? And I asked that because I think if the community knew that we were closing schools and paying $800,000 to get the grass cut, there might be some concern. That's one. And the second thing is, I guess to the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, do you approve this? And were there dollars for this type increase in last, in this year's budget? Because based on the reading, it says effective March 25th, which is the date, so that means we would have to have money out of this year's budget, and then we have to have dollars out of next year's budget. Are those dollars available? And if so, where are they coming from?
So, yeah, the dollars exist in our operating budget, and that's where we've been spending them. The reason that this is, this had to be brought up is because we have attempted to save money by doing these, bidding these out over three years instead of one, because we can get a much better price from these companies if we do it over a longer period. So, the amount that you're referring to, keep in mind, is over three years. Okay? We've already been spending upwards of $100,000, like I said before, $184,000 we'll spend this year on cutting grass. So, you know, I just want to try to let everyone understand where this, you know, how this fits in the context of how we've been doing business in the past.
Could you, given the fact that there's this whatever, would you, perhaps we could deal with this in the next week's meeting, and could you come back with some figures, some details about what it would cost to have all these, what it would cost for all that, so that then we can, the board can then make a decision? Could you do that?
I don't know that I'd be able to get all that information in time, but I'll try, because there are a lot of factors to that.
Well, then, we should, maybe we can postpone it until you can get that information.
If you're already part of your habit...
We need to hurt grass now, though. I mean, I'm a little worried about that.
Doesn't it have a contract for this year?
It's, yeah, it'll expire at the end of this year, so...
So, we still have a contract?
Well, yeah, I'll need to check on when that, yeah, let me check on that. I may have misspoke, I guess, sir.
Okay, well, let's have him come back and...
So, we're paying $184,000 right now. If you want to go up to $258,000, so that's going to be 70, what, 58 and 16, 68, $74,000 more a year, which is a teacher and a half, maybe a teacher and a teacher assistant. We closed the school of Health and Life Science to save $44,000. I'm just not happy increasing our lawn maintenance by $74,000 when we closed the school to save $44,000.
Okay, let's let him get this data, some more information, to bring it back for us to be able to make a decision.
We need to officially table this as a new, as an action, yeah?
Well, it's a work session, they don't have to table it.
Well, whether it is a work session or not, I mean, you don't have any sort of policy about work session versus not work session, and this was noticed as a, as a special meeting, but, no, I mean, if no action is taken, then no action is taken.
So, we don't, yeah. Okay?
Just get an extra session for the training. So typically, would you approve any contract during a work session versus a regular meeting?
There is no policy or rule as to what a work session is. Every board defines it for themselves.
Well, board is our definition.
You don't have a written definition. You, what we have is the public meetings or the open meetings law, which says that if you're going to have a meeting that's not your regularly scheduled meeting, you have to notice the purpose of it, that is certifying. So, this meeting was noticed as receiving presentation and updates on finance.
Okay. Let me just say this, and I'll go. It just seems, in my mind, it seems like we could be more transparent by having a contract approved at a regular meeting versus a work session where we know attendance is limited to zero by the public.
So, I don't disagree, but there are times, I think, to keep that, that something needs to be done immediately related to what a person, for example, hiring a teacher, you know, do we put that off for two weeks, or do we do it like? So, I think we need to keep it. I understand what you're saying and would agree, but let's, let's make sure that it's not lock on stones, that we can do what we need to do. Okay, great. All right, next item, fitting in contracts or whatever.
Yes, we have some action needed for our second summer testing opportunity. Dr. Myrick and Matt Hope, is there anything you'd like to share with the board? They have the documents, they have the documents. Is there anything you'd like to highlight?
Just, this is an opportunity that North Carolina Department of Public Construction affords all school districts in the state to have a second summer opportunity, and with it, they cannot start until the last school day that the children aren't in school. So, the calendar that you have, it starts our remediation period and our testing period after the last student day of the school year. And in order for us to offer this opportunity to our students, we need board approval. Anything you want to add?
We've got two days of remediation and two days of testing built in, and it's subjects of reading and science, not math, because as you know, our math scores are the way this year with the renorming of math.
Board members, questions?
Is this the read-to-achieve?
No. Read-to-achieve happens in June, I...
Can't, I think, June.
June, June, then again in July, and then after again in November.
So, they've got three testing months.
Can you explain the math, what you just said here?
This is the year that math is being renormed, and so next year, reading will be renormed. So, students tested in January and didn't receive a score from DPI, and so now, in May, June, elementary and high school will test math. And it's frustrating, because without that test score, we won't know who made a one and a two, and we won't have the opportunity to test them a second time. So, it's not exciting that we're not going to get to test math, but that's why it's only reading and science.
Okay. So, Dr. Myrick, what is it that you need from the board?
We invite the board to approve what's offered the summer second testing.
Everybody, yes, sir.
I have a motion.
We have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rivers.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. All right, as I mentioned, we're going to move up the reorganization conversation. Do we have that, Stan, do we have the plan slide?
Yes, sir.
If you would put that up there. The reason that the board members said I wanted to bring this up tonight is that...
Your memo? That, no, sorry. Or the, the one that, is your memo or the?
No, the school reorganization plan in action.
Got it.
If you remember, at our last work session, we spent approximately an hour and 17 minutes on this particular topic. I asked staff to go back and pull up roughly how much time we were spending on each thing. And it's, as we talked about this, what struck me, two things. First of all, I apologize for, if I've lost my temper once in a while, but I'm sorry. Anyway, but what struck me was that we were just kind of all over the place, because it really wasn't clear, two or three things. One, that we actually had been going through multi-steps in a fairly lockstep kind of way. I know that people say, "We don't have a plan." I understand why, because it really wasn't that clear, but we do have a plan. The question is whether we're going to continue with that plan, or whether or not we're going to rescind the next step, that kind of thing. So, I wanted to take some time tonight and just go through this. I asked staff to go through this, so we're all on the same page in terms of steps and the action items we've taken. So, Stan, would you, or Dr., sorry. Stan, would you please run?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to. So, you know, based on the information that you provided, we went in, went back through board docs, and sort of gathered the relevant details for each of the steps in the process that the board undertook. So, step or action item number one, of course, was the closing of the Creedmore Annex, this was sort of the low-hanging fruit, so to speak. You know, we relocated some services staff, which was child nutrition and the Exceptional Children's Program to Mary Potter. They've been, they've been out now for some months, so they're ready. The appraisal has been ordered, and we should get that sometime, maybe until late April, we're hoping. So, we'll have a third-party figure on that, on that one. The step or action two, chronologically, of course, was the merger of JFWeb, Health and Life Sciences, with JFWeb Comprehensive. The study was authorized in August 2018. You can see the votes there. Study was then published, we held a public hearing, and the merger was approved there. So, each of these are the dates and the votes in which that occurred. Step or action item three, of course, was Mary Potter and the merger of those students to Northern Bramble, and the designation of that campus remaining a vital part of the community. And actually, if you look down at this fifth bullet, the language in that, in that vote was using the campus as an educational facility and the housing of the central office. That was verbiage from the motion itself. So, again, you can kind of just see the chronological steps that the board took for each of these items. It's not like we're going to be next... All right. Okay, step or action item four, closing of Joe Toller. Again, the date's here, from August through September. The study being presented in October and then revised. If you all recall, on two of these studies, you asked for us to go back and add additional criteria or clarify things that were included in the studies. Public hearing was there, and then the closure was done here, and then the attendance lines followed. Now, those were the things that have been done, so what remains is determining the future use of Toller. No dates have been set for that yet. The next sort of large item out there is, the board has already taken action to determine the reorganization of one or more schools in the southern part of our county, and in August of 2018, you authorized to conduct a formal study of G.C. Holly Middle School, Mount Energy Elementary, and Tar River Elementary School to assess the best viable option for the reassignment of students and maximize the efficiency in the southern area of the county. And the decision was based on the recommendations from the IFSEC study from the summer of 2018. So, the, your focus on those three schools was based, was grounded in the IFSEC study. And then, you know, if we're going to move forward with the architects, then we would need to get cost estimates for those things, those sort of three choices. Then, of course, we would use that information to compose formal studies, and there's been some discussion about maybe a third party to do that this time, and hold public forums. So, let's see. All right, so there's sort of an alternate that Dr. Willian described, and that would be, this is difficult to manage. All right. If we were to reassess the board's previous decision on Holly, you need to rescind the currently approved study, and then to review other reorganization options, the board would need to vote to authorize new studies or a new study, which might include the following, and these were things that you all had discussed at your last meeting at some of the work sessions. You can see those there, as possible as these, not limited to this, of course. These were some of the things that you had all discussed.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that we all kind of had that sequence laid out, and what I'd like to do this evening, and as I said, Mr. Richardson's going to have to leave by, what, six o'clock? I felt we all needed to be a part of this discussion. Go back to the previous action item, the one that we've already done, approved. And I think what we need to do, what I propose we do is plan, is have time for discussion about what we've currently done and what other alternatives might be for us to consider. And here's where I'm coming from with this. We need to make sure that we're... I'm not going to be making any student assignment changes for next year, but the longer this draws out, the more difficult it's going to be to get ready for the following school year. So, I thought it was important that we spend some time talking about this and see where we go. So, let's begin by talking about the current pros and cons of what we've already agreed to regarding Mount Energy, Tar River, and Holly Middle School. Anybody have any thoughts or comments about that? Yes, sir.
I toured Mount Energy and Tar River last week. My own just opinion, one person. It is possible to convert them to middle school, there's some huge challenges. Tar River has a big drop-off at the back of the property that would require, I would think, hundreds of loads of fill to give enough property to do what we do for the athletic school. So, I think Tar River, but Tar River has a separate gym, which I think we can look at, see, we could actually a middle school gym. Mount Energy does not, Mount Energy does not have a big fall-off in land, but there are, there are problems at both of them. There are, about half the classrooms, maybe a third of the classrooms have bathrooms within the classroom. We have other classrooms that share a bathroom, so you have two second-grade classes that share a little deep bathroom between. These are also essentially brand-new, I would call... These are also essentially brand-new, I would call, state-of-the-art elementary schools that are doing a good job. What, what I would prefer happen is not hire architects. I was not impressed with what the architects delivered on the Mary Potter study. We are still paying public opinion for that fiasco. I would like to suggest that someone like Dr. Winborn, maybe we could find a competent, retired, commercial contractor who would pro bono, just go along to give us a run in each area in the world of rough order magnitude. Just go in there and say, "Yes, I know from my experience with codes, this, this, you know, structures and buildings, this is going to have to happen in Tar River. We're going to have to bring in all of this dirt. We're going to have to, this is going to happen, no gym at Mount Energy." Rather than spend money, and I'm really, really becoming a real fiscal conservative because of closing Joe Toller. We closed that, say, $330,000. We don't want to ever not spend that money, say that. So if we could do that and perhaps have an opinion from our superintendent, from our staff, saying, "Is, is worth going forward with an architectural study?" I would feel more comfortable with that.
Because this is important. So you'd have, what would be worth going forward?
Okay, if, if Dr. Winborn comes back and let's say we could find a nice, I mean, Mr. Pice, he has commercial contractor, contracting experience. If we could find someone who retired, maybe would be willing to do this pro bono, who would just go give us an opinion and say, "Yes, if you want to do this, this, if you need a gym, you need a track, you need a, or you need a baseball field, softball field, you need to get rid of the toilets, you need to put in more centrally-located restrooms, this, 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 this is what's going to have to be done." I think Dr. Winborn is fully capable of saying, "If we're going to do this, 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 we know from Granville Central, we cost us much to go to gym, cost us much to go to baseball field, cost us much to go to football field." And come back and say, "On a rough order magnitude, this will cost, to convert Mount Energy, will cost us $2.3 million or it will cost us $500,000." I don't think we need to be within plus or minus twenty or thirty percent. It's been pretty obvious. If it's going to be in the millions, that's probably a nonstarter. If it's going to be in the hundreds of thousands, then that's something. Then we go forward with spending money on having an architect actually tell us. And give the architect explicit instructions and not come back to the board and some, do something high in the sky. It's actually, yeah, kill us in the community. That's kind of what I'm thinking. I personally don't think it's feasible to take two brand-new elementary schools, financially devised, let's just say, and turn them into middle schools. However, we do have a plan. The board, far along with board, did vote for that. But I think, I would feel more comfortable with our own people taking a look. And I think you've done it very quickly. I think it's pretty obvious whether or not this is feasible and whether we're even talking millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, you had mentioned to me one time before that perhaps the state with this new construction facility funding is considered a big one. So that needs to be considered. The, the other option is to look at Hawley. You're talking to Principal Ham, not sure of Hawley. And I'm not trying to speak out of school, but basically I got the impression that he thought Hawley was livable. He said the bigger issue was mental health, not infrastructure. Do we want to look at Hawley more closely and see if Hawley is usable for a few more years? So these are some of the kind of questions that I would like the staff to advise the board on. We, we pay the staff a salary to run the school system and therefore to give us input on what they need to run the school system. So that's kind of what I'm looking at before we go out and spend money on architects.
Okay.
I, I wonder, Stan, is that something that the DPI school planning folks might help with?
When I called them to get some advice about this, they basically didn't have a staff. That was back in January, so they, and they have a long backlog.
We have a state department that is supposed to assist with school facility planning and review, but apparently it's been got...
Four vacancies.
Yes, two.
Four vacancies.
And I have to be very honest, unfortunately, Fran McLean doesn't even want me to help with how to add a deck onto the house. I don't think he wants my opinion on this. It's just not my expertise and I don't think it's Ms. Davis. I don't think it's Dr. Myers and I don't think, Dr. Winborn was originally hired here in an area he is not in right now. And so I'm just being very honest with you. If you're going to make hard decisions like this, you want accurate information. And we're educators.
But, but that could mean, I think you're trying to kick the ball down the road here. You're a superintendent, you're a former principal, you know what it means. You started, you opened a top-rated high school.
I did with the team, with the team.
But yes, you, you supervise, you know the gyms here and you know a softball field and a baseball field. Oh, laboratories, there's no laboratories at those. Northern Granville's had some really nice laboratories, underutilized, but really nice laboratories. Those are expenses. I mean, if nothing else, if you're keen to go in and say, "Here's what we're missing at these two schools. No labs, no softball, no baseball, no gym, toilets, this, this, this." I think we could probably get somebody, maybe Mr. Pice knows somebody who could look at that and say, "Well, that's probably, you took in $3 million." If you're saving $300,000, then we, we hire an architect to give us the exact figures. But I'm thinking we can move faster. I think it's pretty obvious, quite frankly. I think it's pretty obvious it's going to be very difficult to convert those schools. And that's why I hate to spend money right now on architects. Who we have, and I have maybe more confidence in you than you do. I think you're a very smart person and in fact, when you opened a high school, makes me feel very confident in your ability to go in there and look.
I'm pretty clear about what I'm good at.
Let's, let's, yes, sir.
Thank you. About this little conversation. Because, I mean, you talked about the middle, I mean, converting middle school, elementary schools to middle schools. And as I look at and think about this, you know, and you did mention Hawley. Hawley's an old school with the curve of field is not all that big of a thing. But I think, if you think about having all the facilities that you have, you have gym, you have football field, you have all the things that's going to cost a fortune to put at other schools. The idea that I, I, a few meetings ago, was to look at what would cause to renovate and bring it up standard as opposed to doing all these other things. And that's sort of where we are in the scheme of things. And in my opinion, I think we should look at that. And I don't see where we would actually need an architect to decide about that. In my doing, in, in this relation to Mary Potter, because, you know, and I looked at the four and twelve year to do that, you know, that was comical to me because all we needed there, and I talked to the chief building inspector for the county. And I wanted to know from him, if a school is operating today, how much, what you need to do to bring it up standard. And the short answer was, if you don't, unless you tear out something, you don't have to do anything. So, and, and looking at Mary Potter and, you know, there's probably two areas of it that we would need to redo. That would be administrative, we can't afford them. And we, and that's, you know, that's going to be the others. You talk about, you know, the bottom line, the board. I mean, all, all the other stuff can be worked, worked out. And if you look at Hawley and doing, looking at what you can do to make that up standard and how, I mean, how much it costs depends on how much you want to do to. But, you know, my thing was to bring it up standard, modern standard, which I would think would be some tech, technologies in those kind of things on infrastructure. But it's going, in my opinion, it costs a lot less to do that than to convert Mount Energy or Tar River Middle School.
So if, if we, let's go to Hawley, let's go back to Hawley for a minute. If we did work Hawley, renovate, whatever that means, then we would definitely need to close one of the three elementary schools down there because they're all, what, thirty? What's the percentage, Stan, of capacity being used at those schools? I can pull that up in just a second. So we would have, if we did went in that direction, which we could, we would definitely need to close one of those schools.
Get all the G C two, which will...
Right, exactly.
It's actually, it's five...
All of this up there on the...
You got, you got ready?
Yeah, but it's not percentages. Mount Energy is less than 50%.
And what is Tar River? There it is.
So which, so if you just go down the list, Wilton is at 55%. They've got a capacity of 533, they're, they're under 300 kind of that. Mount Energy's at 46 and Tar River is at 65.
Chris, Dan?
What is Butner Stent and Creedmore?
Butner Stent Elementary is at 68% and Creedmore Elementary is at 57. And these were as of 20-day power school numbers. Based on the maximum involvement.
Which has the lowest...
Maximum capacity, sorry.
Which has the lowest...
Looks like Mount Energy. I can print this off if you guys would like.
That's okay. Unless too much, we're, we're good.
We bet on it.
So, so the options then would either look at that right now, what we have, with the decision we made about looking at all three of those schools, would be either to do something with the elementary schools and close Hawley or do something at Hawley and close one of the elementary schools. Is that correct? Does that make sense?
I'm just trying to understand, you're saying with the study that we have now, are you saying then we add in, a look, see at one of the elementary schools or? Because in looking at the southern end of the county, I, I have two questions. What is it that you're trying to accomplish first overall? Are we looking at, at saving money? Because I'm hearing enrollment, but I'm not hearing anything about the cost to maintain them once you get them. So you're going to have to have dollars to keep the schools up. It's almost like buying a new house. It's not just buying a house, it's how much does it cost to keep the house up and running year after year? I think those things have to be factored in when you're looking at what facilities you're going to have. It's not just a one-shot deal. You know, we're talking about the life of the roof and the HVAC systems and other things. So if you leave the, the other elementars and elementary schools in place or the other schools in place, what is it going to cost you to continue to maintain those? And where are you going to get the dollars from?
And that's, yeah. What we're really talking about here in the southern end of the county, whatever it is, is something that is exactly what we, that is actually do. Something that, the main rationale of closing Toller. That when you've got a smaller number of students, not even 50%, the costs that go along with it that are locally funded, because they have to be to meet, you know, the secretary and all of this stuff. It's the same thing, the concept is the same thing we did with, with Toller. We got too many schools down there that simply don't even come close to having a level of student eye that is feasible. So that's really, really that's where we are.
But the irony is, one of the newer schools, Mount Energy, has the lowest enrollment. Now, if we step out here and say we're going to close Mount Energy, when it's one of the newer schools, people will think we're crazy as far as the investment that was made in that facility. So we need to look at the maintenance costs associated with the older schools that you're saying, yeah, I mean, these are 30, 40, 50-year-old schools.
Well, it's the same thing that we said if we consider Creedmore, we just dumped all that money in there. I mean, we're almost at a, at a loss in the southern end because of that kind of stuff. Because we put so much money into Butner Stent and Creedmore, adventure this way to get it livable. And then, so you're right about Mount Energy and Tar River. If you close one of those, those are one of the newer schools. It's just, you, you've got this circular thing going on.
Well, let me just sort of throw, throw this out of the table. And having heard the comments, and I guess we might as well just address this. The, the idea of looking at what we said in step six, I do recall that discussion. But when you look at that and you look at just renovating Hawley, that is another option. But I'm not sure if either of those two options are the most fruitful or beneficial. I won't say most economical in the long term. Because, and I wish Mr. Union were here, but since he's not. We were looking at potential costs and just discussing the potential costs. If you were to redraw lines and impact the high schools, you could better utilize the high schools that we have in the county. You could close the doors to Hawley and move them to one of the high schools. And it doesn't cost nearly as much as any one of these options that you're covering up. So if saving money is something that makes sense, then you need to look at that option as well.
So if we did that, we would then close one of the three elementary schools.
You would close one of the three elementary schools? You could close Hawley, shift Hawley to one of the high schools, redraw the high school lines in the county and have two high schools? Because otherwise, you still can't sustain, sustain three high schools when you're talking six or 700 students.
And I think we need to basically start forward with elementary schools. Creedmore needs to be in that mix. Butner Stent, since it's at 68% and it's kind of over Butner area, which is a higher population density, we may want to consider Butner Stent Elementary as not part of the total four or within two miles each other.
Well, it's 7.6 miles from the front door of Creedmore Elementary to the front door of Tar River. 7.6 miles.
So are you saying, saying that moving kids from Creedmore to up there, other schools, would not be a hardship?
Like you said, I mean, it's two miles to, to Mount Energy from Creedmore. That, that's exactly right.
Two miles.
There's one mile from, yeah, it's two miles.
It's, it's a long one-hour from Tar River.
Well, and, and the bottom line is, the city of Creedmore is even putting in sidewalks. So students will be able to, to walk. But the thing about it is, there are other options if we're looking at, at money. If we're looking at preserving a facility, that's one. But what's the long-term goal of this board? And that will be determined by what are the long-term needs of the superintendent.
I, I agree. I think, I think Dr. McLean and her staff needs to give us a plan. I mean, a plan is saying, "We want to have four elementary schools in the southern part of the county, not five." We want to close down Hawley or renovate Hawley. We want to combine Hawley into South Granville and move the South Granville students into Central and have some of those central students go to Web, so we get numbers up, so we can offer electives and do other things. But I think, I really truly believe this is a job for our school administrators to come up with a plan. come up with a plan of what they can best do to educate our children. And, or maybe several plans, maybe two or three options, pros and cons for each one. And then we come up with an approval of a plan, and then we air it up in detail. But right now, we've been, we've been batting this back and forth since I've been on the board since December, whether we put Holly at South Granville, whether we close a school, whether we made a, a, close an elementary school, whether we made Mount Energy, Tar River from middle school. We've been having these same conversations for four months now.
Tell me about it.
And, and I, I really think that our plan, we're gonna put the ball in your court. And if you all need to tell us, what is your plan for the future for our school system? And then we can debate it and discuss it, and maybe give us two or three options. But, and, and the pros and cons, as only similar with your expertise and Dr. Loomer's, Dr. Meyer's, this day's, we don't have that expertise that you have. At least I don't. And I can analyze data, but you gotta give me your data. So you give me the data, and I'll, I'll look at and give my opinion.
Mr. Respeck, I respectfully, respectfully disagree. And the reason I say that is that all the way along this, and, and it's not just here, but it's almost everywhere that this issue is, is on the table, staff does not run or be a part of the decision-making the board has to have related to, to school closures or school whatever. I don't want them to give you that information, because I think this board has to make that decision. And for them to come in and say, close this school or close that school, I, I just, now that may just be me, and like I said, you and I, I respectfully just disagree with that.
Well, I, I think though, we're maybe not talking the same thing. This, our, our superintendent and our first staff gave us two steps, Mary Potter and Tolu, and they just presented facts.
Right.
And we debated and we discussed and we held public meetings and all that. I think somewhere in the middle is where I'd like to go. Let them through the study. And let them give us several options. I mean, I don't know, other than yourself, who's been a principal and a superintendent, there's nobody on this board that understands the best way to educate our children and what is needed. You know, where the state of the art schools are, where the, you know, commuting, is it, is it gonna be a real burden if we, let's say, turn Granville Central into Holly? Yes, a long drive for the middle schools. Is it better to have a long drive for high schools? These are, these are things Dr. McLean that you know that I don't know. But I'm, I respect your advice, and if you give us several options, and we discuss it and maybe we get outside consultants or whatever, I, I think that, that's kind of what I'm saying. They don't tell us, you know, we want to do this. They say, here's several options and here's the pros and cons.
It must be real, excuse me. It's, it's, uh, it's the board's decision. That's all the makers to decide based on information and where we get that information from, they come from those sources.
I, I just asking for the information.
The information that, you know, we talk about, just talking about lines for each school, I mean, that's a lot that gets, that gets into it, talking about, you know, where the people or the kids are and how close they are to what the school is in proximity, and what it's gonna cost to get them from where they are, from point A to B. I mean, it's just a lot that's involved in it, that, and I, I just don't see Dr. McLean making that kind of decision, saying to us, this is what I think you guys should do.
I, but they, they already did. You gave us three options for the redistricting of Stowe, Shaw, and West Oxford after we closed Tolu. Dr. Loomer presented three options. He didn't say which was his favorite. Well, he kind of did. But, but he gave us three options, and we as a board debated it and we voted. I'm just saying, Mr. Reese, I don't have the, it's not my, I can analyze data, but I don't know what data to give. I would love for our staff to give us several options, not this is our favorite, not, just give us several options, so we know we're somewhere going in the right direction. We've got basically, we've got three ideas here. Turn one of the elementary schools into a middle school, close Holly, rehabilitate Holly, keep Holly open, close an elementary school. Close Holly, move it to South Granville, move to South Granville, change some district lines, combine South Granville with Central, move some of Central to Webb. To me, I think those are our three, what we're looking at. How do we get there?
The thing that we are missing, part of the right net is to grow within the southern part of the county. We got to factor that into what we're looking at.
Right, and that's, that's what hopefully they would look at, too. We got IFSAT, we got, you know, we're gonna have to do something. We're losing one point.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta do something. And so the first step would be if we move whatever, we need to rescind this motion. And until we do that, then all the, these other discussions are, are, you know, are moot. So is there a motion?
Can I just ask a question? So just, there's been, there's been a lot of discussion about not wanting to do things.
It was on the post, it was on the post agenda.
Right. But I'm not sure when, when was the agenda posted? I've just, there's been a lot of questions about doing things at work sessions without notes, and so I just don't want that to come back later.
Well, I, I think what we're doing, what we're doing is related to what we want. Bottom line, it-
It's your decision.
It, it was on the agenda, so I think we can move forward. All right, do I have a motion that would, in terms of rescinding this? Well, it's already been approved. We have a motion. Is there a second? All right.
So it's in. What's the motion? Tell me what the motion is. I know we approved the entire item six.
Thank you very much.
Is that what you, is that what you have?
What is your motion?
My motion is to rescind the study to convert, kind of be rescind the stage to convert Mount Energy and Tar River into middle schools and hire architects to do that. That's the motion, to rescind basically action out of six.
Okay, to rescind action item six. We have a motion, we have a second?
Well, I, I second it, but I just wanted to clarify. But the third part of item six is one of a halving. So if you're not including that now, would we come back and address that?
Right, my, my motion would be to rescind action out of six, we'll come back and then make a new motion of what we want to study based on inputs we give. And we got a TBD, who's gonna give us the inputs? Because some of us want inputs from staff, and some of us don't. So we've got to flush that out.
Okay, I have a second.
A reminder that, that what's already been approved is to convert Mount Energy or Tar River or renovate Holly. So that is in the motion.
The original, the original action that you are rescinding was you asked the staff to study and bring you, so you didn't actually get that specific. I think you were sort of outlining what the staff would do to do that, but the, the actual action was bring us a, the, the best option for reassigning students among Holly, Mount Energy, Tar River, and which facility should be closed. So, I mean, I'm paraphrasing.
Right, and it also says to hire architects.
Well, that, that was not in the original action. So you've never voted specifically to hire architects, as I recall. You asked them, but it's something they would have had to do.
Very good, very good, okay. So we have a motion, I guess, sir?
I just have something for us to think about. I don't know what the answer is. Is when this happens and our wonderful reporter back here reports this, is it gonna look like we have sold the north of Billings that we were closing there, but we're gonna look at here? I'm just wondering, unless in some way it's worded, and I don't know how we do it, whether it be in motion or he's just nice enough to print this, is that we're coming back to look at this, because the way it's looking right in the second is we closed two schools in the north, and now all of a sudden, at a work session that we didn't make a big deal about, we're saying we're not gonna look at southern end. And I don't know what the answer to that is.
That, in my view, I think a subsequent motion that we should make tonight is what we're going to look at on the southern end. So the reporter, no one should leave this room thinking that we're not going to look at the southern end.
And I would be wonderful if that's what we're gonna do. But I have sat here a couple times and watched us saying, we, we rescinded something we did and then it didn't look well like it ought to.
All right, just a, a question related to that motion, it's back to commentary. What is wrong with doing what we've already approved?
It's a, it needs to be a broader study. If there are three, we pretty much are coalescing around three options that are all different. Again, the option to close Holly and convert Mount Energy, Tar River into a middle school, that's, that's the first bullet, or first and second bullet. The second option is to close a southern elementary school and renovate Holly. The third option, which came about after this motion was made and passed last August, the third option was, let's look at a broader, let's make a broader plan, more strategic plan. We've got low utilized high schools, low pass, or low agents in our high schools, which is affecting our ability, our teachers there and offer levels. We're spending money for empty classrooms. So one option might be to try to move Holly to one of the high schools and have just two high schools, two traditional high schools in our county. So that's the third one that was not captured by this action out of six. So I, I think that the, the subsequent motion would be that we consider which of those three strategic initiatives that we wanted to press on with, and then do the due diligence to make that happen.
But once we rescind this, there's no, I don't know what the subsequent motion's gonna be. And depending on what it is, we gonna have communities out there pitting against each other, and it's going to make Charles schools happy, that you can tell on it.
But I, I, it's, it's almost, I'm sitting here hearing like we rescind this and we have no intent to move forward with anything. Aren't we going to do something on the southern end? We just looked at the, the enrollment and the capacity, we know they're underutilized, and-
I guess my, my statement to that would be, and, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, I thought that's what we were doing when we voted on this the first time, and now we've got a new idea. I just, how many more times are we gonna come back and re-modify this study when we never got the first step?
Well, but this study wasn't comprehensive, just because of the third item. We, we didn't say anything about looking at, at South Granville, or one of the elementary schools other than Mount Energy and Tar River, and every other elementary school, Wilton and Creedmore Elementary are much older than Mount Energy and Tar River. So are we going to continue to invest in them in the years to come?
I don't think they have the space to do this.
But do you close them and sell them off? Depending on the money that you do?
Well, I, when we had this discussion, whenever it was, about these steps, my impression was that we really spent a lot of time talking about what to do down there. Because there were a number, we don't, we don't need to be, I mean, we had to look at what are our options? I could not support rescinding this, frankly, if we, and it's just me, we get into talking about closing a high school. And the reason I say that is because these high schools are in, at least in, in our communities, absolutely critical. And to close South Granville, or to close Webb, or close Granville Central, I just, I just, it's for me, it's, that's a non-stop. It just is, and I'm sorry about that, but it's just a non-stop. And if we go out of here saying to the public that we're gonna look at closing one of the high schools, it's gonna be an extremely, extremely difficult time. I just, and I know, and I know that, you know, couldn't we go ahead with this step and have another motion to do an additional step? If you want to get into those kind of things in the vision. We could certainly do. If you want after this, if we're moving forward, then we could very easily look at, well, let's do X, Y, or Z with an additional motion. So right now, for us to rescind this, for me, I don't see a better, better option at this point in time. Now just, yes, sir?
Dr. McLean, the, where it will be, my guess is, and Dr. McLean, if I'm wrong, tell me. My guess is Health Life Science had eleven students sign up after decision was made to close the school, Health Life Science. Eleven students. That's about forty left, less than they had, thirty, forty less than they had last year. My guess is those students are gone. That's gonna put Webb below seven hundred. My guess is Webb will be somewhere around six eighty or something like that next year. Uh, Granville Central, is it six forty? Somewhere in there. Yeah, it's somewhere in there. And South Granville, somewhere around seven hundred. It's gonna go down. At what point, and at what point, when we get down to five hundred or four hundred, the, we just closed two schools that had tremendous community buy-in, and we weathered that, and the community handled it pretty well. I understand it's a little bit different with high schools. I do understand that. But at what point do we have to say, we just don't have the students? The, I, I've got a copy of the whole budget and I'm looking at it. There's, and there's things Dr. McLean wants to do, and there's not the money to do it. So we're gonna have to do something, and every year that we don't do something, one point seven, one point five, two point million, two million dollars up chimney and heat. That's what the last report says, and I fully embrace that. Every year, one point five to two million dollars is gone, because we're not, we're not, we have empty classrooms. So-
What report was that?
The last report. I, I briefed you on that two months ago.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to rescind this. We can get into that conversation maybe at, at another time, but we have a motion on the table to rescind in a second. Any further discussion, anybody else?
Yes, I would love to make sure I have a point of information for the chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I've spoken to Mr. Udi, and who is a graduate, and his daughter's a graduate of South Granville. And he's talked about discussions that he's had with people. He's not here now. So I, the, the point of information I need to know. So when we take his vote, my intent is to vote with the majority, because I intend to bring the motion up again when Mr. Udi returns, because I think his vote will make a difference in the outcome. So I guess you want the chair to know it.
Thank you very much. All right, all those in favor of the motion to rescind that action item six, please say aye. All those opposed, aye. Motion is defeated. All right, let's move on the agenda. We'll, we'll obviously be spending a lot of time in front of discussions. We have not decided about what's the best way to collect the information, the, our, our staff, or outsiders, and costs and all that. So I would like to ask, if it's all right with the board, for staff to come back with your thoughts about how you as a staff, working in conjunction perhaps with somebody who has knowledge, how you, whether, how that would work for you or if it would not, okay? And maybe bring that back at, at our next discussion on this topic. Okay? All right, great, we'll move on then. Thank you.
Well, before we sort of leave this section, item five, I'm a little confused with item five. It's the action item five, Jotola Oak Hill Campus, determine the future use of the facility, and the date will be determined. When are we gonna do that, and why haven't we done it? I mean, we decided to close it. We don't want to continue to pay utilities and to pay to have a grass cut there. So why don't we make a decision on what to do with it? Depending on how much money we can save and how much money is needed, there's no need to sit back and, and, and wait another month or two.
Aye. Dr. McLean, and the staff, look at this.
We have looked at the cost of maintaining this thing we shared with the board, but our cost is for insurance purposes.
That was part of the Tolu study.
That was part of the toller study, um, and, I don't say the, but, I mean, it was a hundred thousand, that's what I'm following. Which would be to Mr. Manz's point.
Why spend a hundred thousand on something that we voted to close? Let's move on.
I think it's worth it, it was four fifty-three, we got rid of it, and it was three thirty-three.
Would you, would you review for us, you know, once we have a certain property, what our options are in terms of getting rid of, or how, or dealing with the very topic that Mr. Manz raised?
And, and that's not all. Uh, we talked about the annex, but I don't know if you all have, but I drew them by eight eleven crescent. It's just sitting there, nice looking house, just sitting there. Why hasn't that been put on the market? Not only is the county, the city of Creavmore, uh, losing tax dollars if it was sold to someone, but we're losing revenue that we could get by being disposed of.
What is that?
It's the house that the teacher, that's why that we own. And to that end, I have another question.
Wait a minute, back up a second, because we're, some of us are learning something. Where is the house?
It's next door to South Grandville.
The backyard, the track, the sound.
We own that?
I think it was so...
Donated there by a teacher.
Well, and, and aren't you...
It's been discussed at Oregon's...
That's right.
Wait, I said eight eleven crescent, that's what...
The White House, Trenton, like, that's, well, that's the, the street that it's on.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I, I, to, to that end, I have a question that, that I think needs to be answered. I would like to see a list of all of the real estate and land that Grandville County School District owns. Period. Because I don't think anybody has a handle on exactly what we own.
Okay, that's, okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Can I just give a point of clarification? The, um, the toller, the ongoing facility cost, I estimated at twenty-five percent of what we were spending, um, for facility costs this year. So that was thirty-six thousand eight...
And that's capital outlay, right?
No, that, it's, it's local facility costs.
All right, explain to us, if you would...
So the, right, so specifically with regard to the annex, as you know, we talked about, you would declare it surplus whenever you're ready to move forward with it. And the staff's understanding was that you wanted some concrete information about its value before you offer it to the county, and so that, they have requested an appraisal. So I think the understanding was that once they get that back, we would determine what our minimum price is and negotiate with the county. And then if they aren't able to pay fair market value, then we would choose a method of sale from there. So if, with any other property, the process is simply, the board determines that it's no longer u- useful, um, declares it surplus, you offer it to the county. That isn't, that sometimes requires some extra steps to figure out what fair market value is. If the county doesn't want it, then you have basically three different statutory methods you can choose to sell it.
We talked about that a month ago, it's anything we've done, I agree with you on this.
They have hired an appraiser to appraise the property the earliest. He indicated he'd get it to us would be April fifteenth, that was the earliest he could get it.
So we have done that, we are moving on that, okay, all right.
Just for the Creavmore annex.
Okay, but then sort of what's the next step? We get the appraisal, we have another meeting to decide whether or not we're happy with the price?
The next step was, my hope is that after the appraisal, the staff will communicate with county staff and come to you knowing what the county is likely to be willing to pay, and then you can determine from there.
And if the county doesn't want it, then we, we, we put it on the market or whatever?
Well, you have, right, you can either do, well, you can sell it to another local unit of government, or you can, um, put it up for auction, or you could do a, a private, like, receive and offer as you normally would and then do offset it, which is what I have recommended.
Well, Mr. Chair, since we've already voted to close Toll, why can't we do the same thing for that?
Curious.
Why, because I think everybody's made the motion to do that.
So the first step for that would probably be some sort of appraisal to determine.
Um, we get an appraisal for Jotola Oak Hill?
We have a motion in a second, we have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, period. Okay, all right, so we'll now move on to our next item. If it's all right with you all, let's take about a five-minute break. We've been going into sports too.
Well, he has needs, exactly.
Well, I...
For the last month, and we've met with several stakeholder groups. And at the end of tonight, we are going to share with you all what those stakeholder groups have actually said. Make sure you share this with the board. This is where we're going to put up the screen at the end of the room, because you brought to us tonight some homework. We're gonna take you through the same activity we've taken all of the other groups through. Because it's really about where do we want Grandville County to go, and what can we afford to do? What would we like to ask commissioners for, and what might we manage ourselves? So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Day and to Ms. Robinson. She has done this for absolutely every group. Mr. Richardson, would you say in our community group, there were about twenty-five, about twenty-five stakeholders? Parents, teachers, bookkeepers, custodians, people from all over, interested in what we were going to do, look for, and want this year. These are expansion items, this is expansion. You heard me mention a lot of this at the State of the Schools address, so that the public would know. So these things are out there, they've been out there since January, but this is about how you feel tonight. We will also, before you leave tonight, give you the dollar amounts after we go through the activity, because that will drive what we talk about when you come back to me next Monday. Does that make sense? So Ms. Day, Ms. Robinson?
So I'm just giving you a backdrop on some of the financial things. I knew we talked about, we, we waited for some of this, um, at the meeting at the elementary school. But I just wanted to get some of the things that I would be able to talk about that night before we get into the work. So as Dr. McLean said, this was, um, picture from the district budget committee was very well attended and just input from, um, all over different, um, areas in the school system. So I'm very pleased with that. They heard a similar sort of presentation, and then they were able to do their work with prior type prioritizing those items. So, um, in addition, we, Dr. McLean has advisory councils, and parent advisory council, teacher advisory council, student advisory, and principal advisory. And we had those meetings and did a similar presentation and got input from those groups. Really, really interesting. Uh, it's kind of hard to see, but the, um, the picture to the bottom right corner are, um, students. And they presented their, we were in groups, and they, um, stood up and advocated for the budget items, what they thought was more, were more important. I mean, very, very powerful, very enlightening, so, um, I think that, uh, that has been a wonderful part of this, this budget process this year. This is kind of an overall budget process, and I think I did hit on this, but I just think it's important to remember where we are in the budget process, um, in that we're doing the budget proposal because we're required to submit to the county by May first. And, um, so we are doing this with the best estimates that we have at this time for, on our state budget, and what the state will do with, um, salary increases or, um, retirement health insurance, which are huge budget drivers for us. The information that we do now with this budget proposal will be used to prepare our budget resolution. And we'll do that in the summer, fall, and I say that summer, fall, because it depends on when the state passes their budget. And then that information goes to the Department of Public Instruction, and then it comes to us, so it's a time period on that. But, but that information is used to prepare the budget resolution. I, I know a lot of people think, well, didn't we do this in the spring, why are we doing budget again in the, in the following? That's why. So, and, um, I, I mentioned this before, but so our total budget resolution for eighteen nineteen is ninety-one point nine million dollars. What I think is important about that, that it's made up of several, lots of funds, different funds. And what's green up here is the state and local fund, because that's what we're concentrating on, and that's our operating money. But then we have federal grants fund, which, um, is like Title One, um, sixty handicap. That's money that supplements what we get in our state and local money, which is our operation. The other restricted fund, that is, um, like, one example of something that's in that fund is the pre-K program. So that is above and beyond what our general operations are. Child nutrition, their money is very separate. Community schools, which is our after-school program, their money is very separate. And you can see it's a business-type fund, it's required to be accounted like that. So it's, it operates from their, um, the student fees, or, um, and that's how it's accounted for. And then capital outlay, which you all know very well, is, is very separate from our, um, local money. That is general money that we get from the county, but it is, is required, it's in a separate pot, and it has to be used for capital outlet. It can't mix, these different funds can't mix.
This is very important, because honestly, a lot of people just don't understand it. The capital dollars cannot marry with the local dollars. So the local funding, even, when we get local money for capital purposes, it is specifically for that. So I can't take capital money for, um, buildings, grounds, things of that nature, and create something instructional or teaching position or personnel. It's very separate money. So we just, we've had to explain that several times, I just wanted to be sure that this work was clear.
Um, the next slide, I know we looked at this with the state funds, um, and the fifty million dollars, but I wanted to be able to talk in a little bit more detail about how the state funds work. I think a lot of times, people don't understand, and, because it's very, it, this is a complicating factor to our, our budget, is how the state money works. But all of those pieces of pie are a different program where we are allotted funding. So each one of those pieces of pie have different requirements about how the money can be spent, but they also have different ways that we get the money, and different ways that we're evaluated on how we spend that money. And when I say that, I can go to the next one. But, um, if, if you just summarize how we get the funds, there are position and months allotted, there's fully allotted, and there's dollars allotted. And let me go through each one of those. Positions and months allotted, go back for a second. So you see that biggest blue piece of pie, and that's the classroom teachers? And we get a certain number of teachers. Currently, we have three hundred and thirty-eight teacher positions that are state positions. And all of our accounting data goes to the state on a monthly basis. And they evaluate how many positions we've used. They don't evaluate how much, how many dollars we've used, they evaluate how many teacher positions we've used. So that is critical when you're thinking about, um, look, you know, comparing two schools. And one school might have a more experienced teacher, and one school has a, a brand-new teacher. Well, their costs are different at those two schools, um, the cost of that experienced teacher and that beginning teacher. But as far as what they're using out of the allotment, both, both of those teachers are using one teacher position. So that's why there has to be, when you're looking at dollars, a little explanation behind it, you know, as far as being able to really understand. And so you can see that's a big portion of our budget is in those teacher positions, big portion of our state budget.
Excuse me, Ms. Day, that's a positive question. Um, so if I understand you correctly, the, the state will fund twelve teachers at Webb. And if all those twelve teachers happen to be highly experienced, Ford certified, master's degrees, the state still pays their higher salaries than if all twelve were brand-new fresh out.
Right.
So it's, it's not, so Webb would cost the state, let's say, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for highly experienced teachers and four hundred thousand dollars for first year. But the state doesn't care, they're gonna, we don't care.
Right, it's a position. It's a position, and so now, so when you look at a school, like, school by school, and you just look at dollars, that is what can be a problem, because if you have a school that has a high turnover and has beginning teachers, it looks like they cost less than the school that is doing a really good job at retention and has these higher-paid teachers, where in reali- reality, it's not costing the district more money, it's, it's coming out of our position allotment.
But where it does cost the tribe is when the local supplement...
Supplement, supplement, exactly.
And we're creating a percentage off of their salary.
Correct, that's right, that's right, exactly right, exactly right. So teacher, classroom teacher positions, um, CTE, months of employment, um, instructional support, which is like counselor positions, that we get that in positions. And then principals, and we've talked about that, but that's based on the school and the school, having a school number and the number of students. We get that to that principal, um, position. The, the next thing is fully allotted, and, um, that is what I think most people incorrectly think that our state money is, is fully allotted. They might think, okay, it's state-funded. Oh, you don't have to worry about that, it's state-funded, like, it's just paid for. Well, it, it's paid for with state money that we have to budget and you have decisions about how we use it. But fully allotted is, like, certain positions still get longevity. And certain state posi- state positions, when somebody leaves, they get paid out their annual leave. Well, when they leave, as long as they are eligible for those things, the state pays for that. So that's what I'm calling fully allotted. So if, if it is allowable, and the, the auditors look at that when they come to make sure that we've coded the right things there, that are only allowable expenditures. But if it's allowable, the state pays for that. But that's a very small piece of our state money that's, that is that way, it's just those benefit-type things. It's not substitutes, because I think sometimes there's a, it's a misunderstanding that it might be substitutes. It's not substitutes, it's just longevity, annual leave payout. I mean, there are few, um, kind of benefit-type things for our state-paid employees. And teachers don't even get longevity, teachers and principals don't even get longevity anymore, so that, that's not part of that. The third type is the dollar allotments, and that's what you would normally think about. That's, that's like how we get the county money. We get a certain number of dollars, and we can spend it, um, if we get a hundred dollars, then we have a hundred dollars to spend. If our, if our employee costs us eighty dollars this year, then we got twenty dollars left to do something with. If the employee costs us eighty-five dollars, we got less, you know, dollars to do something with. So that's what those dollar allotments are. So if you look at our, so if you look at our total state funds, and how that breaks up between those types of funding, the, the biggest portion is positions or months allotted. But the, um, you can see, it's still a big portion that is, um, dollar allotments, which is about thirty-nine, almost forty percent of our budget. And so when you're talking about fifty million dollars, that's a big number. And the important thing about that is, just like I said, if we get a hundred dollars, we got a hundred dollars to spend, and if our costs go up, we got less to spend with that, that, um, those dollars. So sometimes, the state increases and, um, health insurance and retirement, it costs us more in our state money, and we have less to do other things with. So I think that's important. Whereas position and months allotted, the state accounts for that, and we get that funds. So, and then that little sliver of red is what I'm saying is fully allotted. Like, as, as long as we are eligible for it, the state pays for it, but that's not a big piece of our, our total budget. So I think that's important, and that's a, that is a, a very, a difference, that is a uniqueness to, um, school finance, about how that works. Um, but, and so, every, like, that piece, that state with all the different pieces of pie, each one of those has a different formula. But when you boil it down to as far as the formulas are concerned, um, ninety-seven percent of those are based on student membership. The student numbers drive how we get those state dollars.
Which was really important to all the stakeholder groups. It was sort of an aha moment when they saw, while we keep saying, we really need our students the first twenty days of school. After that, we don't get funding, so it's critical that we get ADM and we get it early in order to get funded.
Right, and so that other, that two point seven percent is like grants that we get, you know, there's certain other grants that are not necessarily based on, on student membership. But the, the majority of the funding, I mean, the special education funding is based on the number of special education students. You know, it's all, it goes back to the student membership, you know, the number of students. So that's kind of a overview, I guess, of, of one-on-one on state funding. Um, and that's the largest portion of our funding that, um, and the largest portion of our budget is our state money. The local funds, um, this, and you've seen this, this is a breakdown of how we spend our local, um, dollars, or, or what, how our budget resolution, um, broke, was broken down, um, and forty-six percent is salaries of benefit. We have very few, um, employees that we pay out of local funds. We try to, to, um, make sure that we're paying as many... We try to make sure that we're paying as many as possible out of state or federal dollars. But the biggest portion of that is the local supplement that comes out of the local fund. The purchase services and supplies and materials are mainly the maintenance cost. And then the transfers, sixteen percent, that is, it really, that's part of that sixteen-point-five-million-dollar local budget resolution, but those are funds that we're pass-through for. There are charter school funds that we receive, but then go to the charter school. So really, that light blue piece of the pie is not money that Granville County Public Schools can spend out of that sixteen-point-five million. Just wanted to include in here the, some budget drivers over the years. And we looked at this at Butterston Elementary as well. Based on some of the questions that we got at the county commissioners retreat, we provided this information to the county as well. But just looking back over the, from twelve thirteen through seventeen eighteen, at different budget drivers, the first column are the number of employees. You know, in the fall of the year, the HR department always brings to the board the SS two-hundred report that has to go to the state. And so these are numbers from those reports of each year. So it's a snapshot in time of the number of employees that we had. In twelve thirteen, we had nine-hundred-and-eighty-three, and seventeen eighteen, eight-hundred-and-eighty-four. So it's a ten percent decrease over that time period. Beginning teacher salary, this is the state salary from twelve thirteen up to seventeen eighteen. It was thirty thousand eight hundred up to thirty-five thousand in seventeen eighteen. The next column over is the total cost of a beginning teacher, which I think is a really, kind of brings it all together as far as what our costs are. This includes the local supplement, the retirement cost that we pay, health insurance that we pay, and the social security that we pay. The total cost of twelve thirteen was forty-seven thousand nine eighty-seven, and in seventeen eighteen, it was fifty-eight thousand two seventy-seven. So it's a twenty-one percent increase in the beginning teacher's cost, beginning teacher cost over that time period. Which includes that retirement rate and the health insurance increases over time, which you can see how individually those. And of course, we have lots of different employees that we pay in our budget, but I think this is, you know, the majority of our budget is teachers. So this is a good way to kind of look at how our costs have changed over that time period. We've talked about, and you've seen this before, the different funding sources that we have available, our state and local, asking the commissioners for funding or for our fund balance. But I thought this next slide was a good reminder of where we are with fund balance. So this is estimated, because it's based on what we budgeted for fund balance appropriated in eighteen nineteen. So the audit, as of June twenty eighteen, had six-point-nine million. We've appropriated nine-hundred-and-fifty-five seven seventy. So that would give us a fund balance going into this nineteen-twenty year of six million.
We thought that was an important slide, to make sure we shared the information.
The next thing is the Granville County funding. I think it's important to look back at, and you got this, I mean, we had this at Butterston, and I sent a copy of this out, but I just wanted to walk through, because we'll be looking at something similar to this for this year. And so last year, we started with the seventeen eighteen funding, what they had funded us in seventeen eighteen. So that's the fourteen million and the one-point-three million. And then, in the county manager's budget as continuation, they included six-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand in operating and twenty-six thousand in capital outlay. And then, they provided a service expansion fund. So that goes into their budget, but then anything we ask beyond what they put in there for continuation is service expansion, and that's where they have the line item, the different line items, and that's, you know, up against what other, what the sheriff is asking for, and what the, you know, for additional services. They look at that, our additional services compared to what other county agencies are asking for. For things above and beyond what you're currently doing, is what, is kind of how Mike had explained it, is service expansion. So then eighteen nineteen, that, this is what, this is our current funding in this current fiscal year that we receive from the county, is in that far-right column. So that was my overview, and then the next is the budget.
Just go back just for a minute.
Okay.
To that last slide. Has anybody got any information about if the bond passed, the state-wide bond passed, what kind of money that would be for Granville County?
We had a rough estimate. It was right at eleven million.
Well, my question would be that if and when this passes, will you all be interested in what you would like to see that money spent on? Not, just not in, not, just to talk and bring it back to the board at some point in time. What I'm getting at is, if we get eleven million dollars, we ought to, the Board of Education should be prioritizing how to use that money as opposed to other groups, i.e. the county, deciding what they want to use that money to for in the schools. Does that make sense? Do you guys think, Mr. Udi?
Isn't it appropriated just for capital outlay?
Yes.
So that would be sort of what we're looking for, to fix up all the building?
Correct.
Is that what you're asking?
I am, I am. In other words, and, you know, we may, we need to know what we want and be collected, as opposed to somebody else, oh, you got eleven million, you need to put in here. When we may think it needs to be somewhere else, you would think.
This is kind of new to me, so let me just make sure I understand. So what you're saying is, if, and there's a video, we don't know yet, but we think it's gonna happen? We're pretty sure. We're gonna get eleven million dollars that we can spend on capital outlay?
It's for construction.
For construction.
That's how Granville Central is built, I believe.
And that's, and that's what we're waiting to see. You know, what we're actually getting, and what the restrictions are beyond, you know, associated, and what the rules are associated with.
But that's on the legislative floor. That's why I keep sending you all some of the latest and greatest. This is on the legislative floor.
So, so we, we close schools, and we're gonna get eleven million dollars?
Because it's for construction, not for.
Right, I understand, but... If we use that money for construction facilities, that should free up some other local funding that we should use for repairs and anything else, that could have kept toller over, could have kept.
But it couldn't because of the toller, the expense is our current expense. That's ongoing expenses.
Right, but it could be local funding. Well, the other issue is then, we're talking about rehabilitating Harley, or... I mean, it's just a whole, a whole new bargain. I mean, if we get the eleven million dollars.
Which may be one reason why we need to see what's going on in some part of the county.
And it's a gift, because the first time they put it up, it was voted down. So now it's being brought back. So it's a gift, if they pass it.
So it seems to me that we need to wait to see if we get them. But we also need to have a strategic plan about what we're going to do. Because clearly, with eleven million dollars, we can go a long way towards fixing a lot of our problems, including Harley potentially. So that's why I think the motion that we didn't rescind, we need to rescind, and we need to go back and have all three looked at in light of the fact that we may have money to do those things.
We don't know that, though. We, I mean, like you say, it could be done immediately, it could take if it goes for vote. It won't be till twenty twenty.
Right, it's a popular referendum, that's why.
So we may, we may not know it all, anyway.
But we know it's out there, and there's a possibility, we just don't know for certain.
So when is the earliest, twenty twenty three, that actually, it's a pass of legislature, and then the popular, the voters vote for it? Then they have to put out the bill?
But if they go with the Senate plan, which will not require a vote, that money could be available next year. Well, we don't know any of that, it ain't gonna happen.
Well, based on this discussion, would it be appropriate to put this motion back on the floor again now that Mr. Udi is here? And since I was on the prevailing side, I believe I'm in a position to bring that motion back up again. And if anyone can second it, and we can decide whether or not, even if we don't rescind that item six that we discussed, we could add that item whereby we look at South Granville.
Sure, but yeah, that's, that's absolutely, do that.
All right. Do you have a motion? Yes.
Oh, wait a minute, should we do that during this agenda item, or should we, or does it make a difference?
I suppose it doesn't make a difference at this point.
So we have a motion?
Yes. Because you don't know what was discussed.
My question is, under Robles' authority, and I don't know which one they had there, do we have like six months to re-bring that back up?
No.
But he's not bringing it back up, he's making a new motion about to do something else. Is that correct?
And in essence, so Mr. Udi will understand, the motion that was made in August of last year about looking at Tar River and Mount Energy and converting it to middle schools and renovating Harley, we discussed at our last meeting whether or not that meeting should, that motion should be rescinded. We attempted to rescind it this evening, and it was not rescinded. So that motion still stands. However, I informed the board that we had talked, and you had indicated about, you had discussions with others in the community, and there is perhaps a need to look at South Granville becoming the new Harley, re-aligning the districts for the two, the high schools, and reallocating students between, I guess, Granville Central and Webb, when we use South Granville for the new Harley. We couldn't get that part of the study, because it wasn't in the original motion. And Mr. Rivers recommended that that be included, but it wasn't. So in essence, I voted with the prevailing. So by Robles' authority, I could bring the motion up again, that we would be able to add this aspect. So then we would have three studies looking. We will be looking at the Tar River and the Mount Energy and renovating Harley, but we would also be looking at how cost-effective and the benefits of moving, shifting the lines between Granville Central and Webb, and using South Granville as a middle school. Am I confused everybody?
Well, that's okay. If I understand, you can make a motion to do anything you want to in the South in terms of this standalone. If you make a motion to do what you just said and get a second, you can do that, you can make a motion to do whatever you want to do. So that's, I just want to make sure you understood that.
Well, then I move that, based on the previous discussion that we had, that we look at the third option identified by Mr. Rivers, that will include South Granville, closing one of the elementary schools, and closing G C Harley.
I second.
Okay, let's talk about that, because I'm confused.
May I have your statement, so not, not the same thing we did earlier, but to add to item six, consideration also of, am I, am I good?
That's right, because that's what he asked for, and the board didn't approve it, because.
Okay, so not rescinding the prior action to study Mount Energy, Harley, and Tar River, but to add to that?
Yeah, and I don't have a problem not rescinding that, because I think on the merits, the third aspect will come in far more economical than either of the first two.
Okay, and the third option is to turn one of the high schools into a middle school?
That's correct.
Close Harley?
That's correct, and one of the elementary schools.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Second, a motion means further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All those abstaining, aye. So which, of course, is a positive vote for it, so, but just for the record. Anyway, all right, we move on. We got that done, all right?
May I ask a question, Mr. Udi?
You may.
So just to make sure that everybody understands what we voted. The staff will go forward with apparently now three studies.
That's right.
And I would, I would like to make sure we understand that before we pay money to architects, that we discuss that, that we see what the staff has said on their own, what they recommend, what they recommend. I want, I want us to move forward as fast as we can. But I think we need to narrow down, in other words, I don't think we need to pay architects to study all three of those. We need to find out what makes the most sense from an educational point of view, financial point of view, and then if we're gonna bring in outside architects to spend money, then we do that.
I think we, okay, and I, I don't... How much time do you expect staff to spend on this? And I'm not taking up for them, but, and then close out the school year? I mean, you know, how are we gonna, how much time, how much time do you think it'll take to do all the things that have been listed here?
Well, here's the problem, if, if, if we're gonna get architects, the staff has to write the request or proposal, the staff has to send out bids, the staff has to do all of that, write a, write a work order, and then we have to wait for the architects to do it and get it done, and we're talking, I think, probably to get to the summer. I don't know, I don't know if it's more work for the staff to do that, to actually hire architects, than it is to have a meeting and go out, maybe together, and look at the schools. I think we need a, a rough word magnitude estimate, and a rec, and a, an opinion from the staff. And I think.
Well, you're gonna have to involve people from maintenance. For, I mean, we've got eight of them, how many we got? I'm not disagreeing at all, I mean, I'm just trying to figure.
I think this is hard stuff, this is not easy, I understand.
Well, I, can I ask a question? Because I, there was some discussion about consulting from retired facilities managers, that sort of thing. Is that something that you consider needs to come back to you, or is that within the scope of their?
Dr. McLean, or Mr. Peace, they know someone who would be willing to help us in, as a pro bono or very reduced charge, and that, that's great. I was not impressed with the architect's study and Mary Potter results, and what happened when they breached us? That killed us. And so, I guess, I have more confidence in Dr. McLean than I do in some architectural firm that doesn't understand education. Dr. McLean's a vote of confidence in you, though I know you don't want that, but I am putting the burden on you, because I have confidence in you to do this.
Well, I don't know that you should. It is nowhere near my expertise. It, we will have to contract, that's what it is, you mean. We're going to have to contract. I will also tell you, I appreciate you mentioning Tom here. We're in budget development season, so financially, every rake and hour Saturdays right now, it's with budget, and it's trying to get everything together, so that we need the law to get it to commissioners. With regard to what we have going on right now in Mr. Windboard's camp, I'll be honest, we pay people for this, because this is what they do full-time, and it still will take to the end of summer. So not only are you expecting us to do it, but you're expecting it to be on stairboys while we close out a school year. I'm not certain this is reasonable at all.
I understand. Is there someone other than architects, is there some?
Absolutely, there are companies that do this, yes. Let us research that. What I also heard tonight was, at some point, you wanted us to look at possibly what needed to be done and to bring a plan back. Why don't, why don't we sort of do that? I think we can reach out, we can get recommendations from other districts, from a law firm, because you all have a branch that actually does this work with school systems. And let us bring the recommendation back. And if we don't like it, we'll just, we'll keep digging down.
Good. Yes, sir. I really don't see an urgency, because we're not gonna be. I really don't see an urgency because we're not going to be able to do it in this couple of years. It's going to be the next, what, 2021, so I think we can take our time on this and make sure it's done right. I think that's what we want, is what we've done properly. So.
What, what worries me is, if you look at this time last year, I wasn't on board, but I was coming to meetings and I was listening, this time last year, we're kind of where we are this time this year, and we barely squeaked under the gun giving Dr. McLean the time to respond to our closure. We didn't close Toller and Mary Potter until January, and that was after the November request was made. I feared that if we, if we go through the study till the end of the summer, by the time we do all the public hearings and all of the debating and back and forth, we're going to be pushing November, December, January again, and that's just, I don't think it's fair to completely understand. It's just hard to do that. So I guess it would, I guess I would just ask for, and I know everybody's busy, I would ask for, I agree with you. Well, we gotta, you gotta do it, we gotta move on quickly and we gotta get the study going so that we can hopefully by August have our ducks in a row, get our public hearings out of way in September, and make decisions or not make decisions. Maybe the decision is to postpone it, maybe the $100 million is for the government, I don't know, but we need to be in a position to act for your benefit next fall.
Part of that was the study we got, that the one I think he's talking about, we figured out was inaccurate and they had to go back and redo it.
Yeah, that's, that first is a lot of, the extra time there.
That's true, that's true, it did, it took some, took some time, yes.
But you know, this, this board has to consider our first priority as a blessed staff, and that is to take care of educational aspects of, you know, come June and the reports start coming about what they did. We're not going to want from here to say, you know, we were doing, we were getting studies done and therefore, you know, and we want this stuff done, but they have to have time to do it in addition to what they have to do because, you know, I want students to be successful first and then we need to do this other stuff. So I, I just don't want to get the stuff that we're asking as it relates to buildings and schools closing and that kind of thing to get in the way of what these administrators need to do to make sure that they do what they need to do.
Well, all I'm trying to do is let a fire under the board and the administration, and I'm gonna push. I'm gonna push and then people can push back, but I, I really think there's more urgency than we each show. And, but I'm, I'm happy when the board says something else, you know, fine, but I'm gonna push because I think we've got to start hiring more teachers and we've got to have money to pay it and we've got to find that money somewhere, we just can't keep wasting money. So I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Peace, and I agree, I'm not gonna say let's go all half-cocked and not.
Or you might hurt my feelings by pushing, but I'll push back still, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and that's basically, and that's, and that's a great way to do it, that really.
But you know, usually we're right, you're wrong.
That's, I'm, I'm wrong, probably, according to my wife, I'm probably wrong more times than.
So she's, that's fine. Probably pretty accurate.
That's probably fine, but.
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to maybe add a ramble to the timeline that you're considering. So, and I know you, you were using the example of how it went through this year. So the way I understand it, the three approved studies would be renovate an elementary school so that you can relocate Harley to that building, right? That requires extensive renovation, so even if you made that decision in the fall, that would not likely happen for another year and a half at least.
Another reason for urgency.
Okay, well, what I'm saying though is it, it, it adds a level to not being able to do it in, as Mr. Udi was saying, in the 2021 school year, right? So then the second option would be closing an elementary school, just shuttering it, moving those kids to other elementary schools and renovating Harley. So again, a big renovation project there. And then the third option would be closing the elementary school, relocating Harley possibly to a high school, which probably wouldn't require much renovation. But two of the three options would be like maybe three to four years, possibly three years out when it would be implemented.
Just, 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 it's everybody's.
That's a good point.
And that's what I said, on its merit, the third option is probably going to beat out the first two easily.
Okay, all right.
Well, if we could get back to budget this year.
What's budget?
So then, anything else there or is it time to take the homework out?
Yeah, it's, it's about time to go to the homework, but I just want to point out a couple of things on the items for consideration, and that was on the, where's the, the second slide that? That one, go, go back, go, one more. Back. Okay, so when we met with the principal group, their recommendation, they worked on some of this wording and, and the title, what they really are looking for as far as, we had had a secondary director and they worked on the wording of this, what they are wanting is a school-based 612 curriculum and data facilitator. And so, and they helped to, to wordsmith this, this word as far as what they're really looking for there. So when you might have had secondary director on yours, we've got it taped on top of, we've got secondary director on the bottom, but on top we've got school-based 612 curriculum and data facilitator. And then, go to the, the last slide, better. Communities and schools, you heard a presentation about that and the request for a half of the funding for a position at Webb, and so that's been added as an item there. So I just wanted to point out the changes since you got your homework, I thought it was.
So we call this a work session because, gentlemen, let's get ready to work. Michelle, I turn it over to you.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
You had, a while ago, I wanted to take a break.
Hi.
Did you still want to do that?
No, I took mine, so you can. Now let's take, let's take five minutes.
Miss Bay said, we have had several conversations with lots of stakeholder groups around budget priorities. And you have competing priorities, right? Lots of things we want and need and not, you know, a lot of names, et cetera. Um, we, I, she asked me if I would facilitate that process with the principals, which I was absolutely happy to do. And so we are going to do that with you all tonight. My role here is just to minister a process and to gather your thinking to help inform the budget process. So you need a few things to get started. In your folder should be an envelope that looks like this, you need that. And you also need your homework that back there you have to hand out. You should have a pink sheet, a green sheet, a blue sheet.
How many of us have done our homework? Two?
Partially.
Partially, two and a half.
It's about your thinking, we'll get you done, it's all right, it's all right. Okay, so the process that we're going through tonight is to think through budget priorities. But before we, and so there are a couple of things, you have a blue sheet that listed the items that are also posted on the wall, and you started thinking through, started your homework, which of these are priorities for me? Okay, so everybody get your blue sheet that you did for your homework, okay? You got that, please?
I have Mr. Richardson's here.
Okay. Dr. McLean's got the administration. Okay, now, before we jump into those priorities though, um, the other piece that, that you had in there was a pink sheet, and that pink sheet says essentially, you have any additional priorities that you want to add to the list, right? So we can't really prioritize because we have everything on the table. So what we need now is any item that you had on your pink sheet, we need on a pink strip of paper that's in your envelope. So if you added anything to your pink sheet, then grab a pink slip of paper and add it, and we're gonna add it to the chart. So there are markers around, does anybody have any item that you want to add to the list before we get started? Anybody added anything to your additional budget request? You good? Good, you good? Anybody have anything to add?
Oh, my gosh.
I know.
We had unanimous agreement on some of it.
We had lots of things to add, so that's, that's interesting, that's exciting. Okay, so one more thing before we jump in and get started in, on your green piece of paper you had for your homework, your green piece of paper was around efficiencies. Are there any places where we can do things more efficiently? Is there anything on your efficiencies that will cost money?
Negative.
It will save us money? Okay, well, hang on to that because she needs that in a minute. But is there anything on your efficiencies that would cost money that we would need to put on as a budget item? Anybody got anything, check your, check your list. Okay, all right. So if you have ideas for ways to save money, make sure you give that green sheet to Beth so that she can incorporate that into the thinking, we can do that at the end, okay? So then, if we don't have anything to add and we don't have anything, any pinks or greens to add, any clarification you need about any of the items that were on the blue sheet? Anybody have any questions, what does that mean, what does that look like? Everybody feels really good about it? Yes? All right, then we get to jump to the fun part pretty quickly. In your envelope, you should have some dots. Start with the green ones. Okay, get your green ones first, you should have green dots, you should have tens.
Dots.
Dots. You should have ten green dots.
I need one for Mr. Richardson, please.
Uh, sorry.
Dr. McLean, you hit him.
I know he left it.
She gets to represent his thinking. All right, your dots represent votes, you get ten votes. So when we're thinking about all of the items, possibilities of places where to prioritize funding, you have ten votes. Now, based on your blue list, your blue sheet where you set some priorities, I'm gonna ask you to come stick your dots to indicate your priorities. Now, if you feel super strongly about one item, you can put all ten of your votes on that one item if you want to. If you want to spread one vote across ten items, you can do that too. You can put five on one and three on one and two on one as a key. Your dots represent your priorities, okay? Any questions about what we're gonna do? All right, so, great, go. So your dots decide the item number.
Well, Michelle, say one more time how many dots.
You get ten green votes.
Ten green, I go.
Ten green votes.
All I wanted to know was the color because she wasn't.
Yes, great, the others are if we have to break ties, hang on, you don't need orange and pink yet, that's only if we have to break a tie.
Well, you haven't told us about the end game. I mean, I understand putting the dots, but what will the dots mean?
The but, the dots represent of all of these possible places to spend money, in your opinion, what's the biggest priority?
Okay, so if my opinion doesn't mail with the group, what options do I have?
We'll talk about it.
We talked about this and more, you asked if there are any questions.
Oh, come on.
Dr. McLean indicated that at some point.
I know.
Let me, let me just say this, you have me house hunting and I'm looking in Beverly Hills, but I can only afford Paddington and Creedmore. I need to know dollars.
Well, there comes.
You've only come, it's coming.
Well, yeah, but if I know the dollars before, I won't go to Beverly Hills.
Well, how about Beverly Hills first?
So, so think of the, I would go at first to the lens of what's, what's best for kids and what's best for the district, that's right. Yeah.
All right.
Regurgitating, Mr. Evans comes.
Hey, 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 I mean.
Okay, I'm, let me see what Mr. Richardson has here.
Hey. Did it what you wanted.
Stay up here, but don't say anything.
Rock, Mr. Rivers, you got, you've been ordered up here.
I mean, dinner, I'm waiting, I'm definitely waiting here an explanation.
There you go, Ted. Yes.
Do you have any questions about any of them? Let's talk about them. What does that look like, what does that mean?
Well, certainly we know where one priority is.
Sweet, for instance.
What we're doing is seeing how all, we all feel about everything.
That's right, that's right.
I mean, you know, to see all of us, I mean, the teacher thing just standing out.
Which means we're just no different than life. We excel, the one we prioritize.
We prioritize, it's not like this.
Well, not like this, but we.
No, but I mean, we prioritize with the board in the board.
But the community prioritizes too.
Yep, and we're gonna show you that too.
They, they know that last year as well.
Well, that's good.
It's pretty powerful to see for the dots land, isn't it? It's pretty telling, Beck and I have seen this for every group and it's been amazing.
Social workers.
What I can tell you that is interesting for me to see is some of the thinking is very similar. It is, isn't it, I mean, Michelle has seen it too, this is very similar thinking with that one here.
Is it?
Mm-hmm, some, some of it.
All right, so, looking at that, clearly teaching positions is, is in, is a priority for this group. And it looks like a social worker is a priority for this group.
Workers.
Workers, yes. So there are a couple of places where there's some consistency and some, some shared thinking. Psychologists, assistant teacher positions, instructional lead teachers for math and reading, universal breakfast. So now we need to break some ties. Grab your orange one. Grab your orange one.
Michelle, may I get some?
You may. You only get five votes this time.
So where are we voting from now?
Now you're only voting across the ones that have a five on them.
Five and higher or just five?
Just five, because the priority right now is teaching positions and then social workers. We're trying to break the tie on the ones that have five.
And we have to use all black dots.
And if you need to tear a dot in half and do a half a vote in one and a half a vote in the other, you do that too. Priority, right? Priority. Oh, come away, please.
Never mind, just do with five.
Yeah, it's fine. You get five.
Okay. This was fine.
We got one more thing to do.
Oh, no, I told her it's a...
Alright.
You got two sevens and two eights.
We do have two seven. Is that close enough? You wanna, or you want to try to break it again?
Well, what would be faring on the ground on that?
Alright.
I'm getting either additional...
Do we get to use red?
So we've got, we've got...
Instructional lead.
Instructional lead teachers for math and reading, and additional teaching assistant physicians. Break a tie.
What is it now?
We're now breaking the tie between additional teacher assistant physicians and instructional lead teachers. Just these two.
It's only between these two.
Right. The two that have an eight.
Either way, I'd...
We get clear.
I'll tell you what I'd like to see. We have one dot, and we have to choose among all of these.
National Development Provider.
I'm actually gonna give you three, but to your point, yes. Yeah?
No.
Okay. Now, I think we've got some priorities to play out here. You have one more thing to do. There was a yellow piece of paper in your homework. And your yellow piece of paper in your homework said, "These are untouchables. They are so important, don't touch them." Okay? So, if your untouchable is one of these, you have yellow arrows in your envelope. Go put your yellow arrow aside the one that you feel like, though mentally it's too important. And if your untouchable is not up there, then we need to add it and stick it there. Okay?
You're saying that you asked if we wanted to add something at the very beginning.
Right.
And there were no additions.
So I'm going to assume, I'm assuming that we're not gonna be adding anything, but we have to put it out there just in case. Because if somebody had something on their untouchable, then...
Yes, I would add something, but I didn't add anything, and so therefore I'll just hold my yellow stick.
So if there's anything up here that in your mind is, cannot be touched? Which is not... And that's aren't up here either.
I think it's thoughtful, okay?
Yeah, I think it is.
How do I show that?
So... SRO cuts. We'll add up here as well, and central services.
That, one thing that I put out as my number one untouchable is the ongoing current expense money that we get from the commissions. To me, that is absolutely top priority.
And I think we need...
It's base for all of our supplements.
Maybe we put that on a yellow slip? I think that definitely is...
But there's no place up there to put it.
No, we write it, we write on a yellow slip.
I got it, I got it on this, but you want it somewhere else?
It's okay. Yeah, can you do it? Language. We'll write it for you. We've got it right here.
Okay. So when you step back and look at that, you're saying your priorities are teaching physicians, instructional lead teachers?
Social workers, number two.
Social workers, number two. Instructional lead teachers. Teaching assistant physicians.
Universal breakfast.
And then, a tie between universal breakfast and psychologists. Now, you want to add anything?
Well, I have, I have two comments.
Okay.
The first comment is, those priorities are not in alignment with our strategic plan. Nowhere up there do we talk about safety. And that's supposed to be our top priority. Therefore, that's a shortcoming. And second, I'm wondering what made this board get religion this year and want universal breakfast? Because when I brought it up last year, it was voted down six to one. As a matter of fact, it didn't even get a second.
Can I have a question about universal breakfast?
You weren't ready last year. Well, I was. That's the best issue.
One asks you to consider all the options and get logical.
I have a question about universal breakfast.
You may, you may ask that question.
I'm missing something. If I read this correctly, and they did read it wrong, wrote this correctly, we were, you were asking us to pay fund balance and pay for every single student to get a free breakfast every morning. Is that correct?
That was on the one time list we gave you that we will not be revisiting that day.
Well, what is this then?
This is just an area of interest. All of these are areas of interest we have been doing better in our county. That's one of the things.
Well, what do you mean by universal breakfast?
Stan, you want to talk a little about you and our nutrition manager and Mr. Richardson? Let me tell you what Mr. Richardson put on his sheet. That was number one for him. He put, "I feel money in this area." Now, he did put, I mean, I was here to do this for two years to get data point. Universal breakfast is done all over the state of North Carolina. We're being asked to be creative about how children get food in their mouths so that fuel can go to their brains. But we recently sent Dr. Winborn and the child nutrition manager to a conference. You want to share the No Child Hungry Initiative?
No kid hungry.
No kid hungry.
It was just a one day, you know, workshop basically for the folks all over the state. There were a lot of districts that were there celebrating their achievements since they had implemented the universal breakfast. And they talked about how discipline rates plummeted, test scores went up, and it was just, contributed so positively to the school environment. You know, right now, Patricia Krueg estimates that we're probably only serving about fifteen to twenty percent of our children on a regular basis with breakfast. And universal breakfast gets everybody in. You have kiosks set up in different parks in schools. You don't have to go to the cafeteria and sit down. And it's really, you know, designed to not just, you know, pay for those children that might otherwise be able to afford it, but to make it so that it's just part of the habit of the school. It's part of the culture of the school. So that you come in, you get fed, you're not hungry, you're settled. Providing, you know, sort of a, there's a second chance breakfast too in high schools. They talk about after first period. It really is shown to help high school kids. There was a high school principal there. He's a high school principal of the year. And man, he just, he gave an amazing presentation showing data about what had happened in the school since he implemented this. It was very, very impressive.
And Dr. Winborn talked a little bit about how we're piloting it. We've piloted in a few schools this year, and grades have improved on type of...
They've jumped, they've gone, I mean, you know, we have not piloted giving anyone a free breakfast, but we've changed the way we provide access to the kids. Sort of a grab and go, breakfast in the classroom, that type of thing.
Hey, I, when I was doing my homework, I talked to a number of parents in the past three weeks ago. For us, in our family, sitting around the breakfast table was part of our daily routine. I mean, that was, talk to the children, what can you do today? Gave them a nutritious breakfast. And not every child was that fortunate. But the parents that I talked to were nuclear families, mother, father. And I said, "Do you all..." Yeah, we all had breakfast. So, I can tell you right now as a parent, no, I'm not gonna, I don't want to give that up. I don't want to have the school, and I don't want to have the taxpayers pay for my child's breakfast when we need to hire more teachers. I don't want fund balance to pay for that when I can afford to pay my, pay for my child's breakfast. So, I'm, nothing that you mean, I have to look at the data, but I'm actively opposed to this. This, to me, is just a consummate waste of money.
Mr. Dr. Winborn, what in the, do they talk about the percent of students who did not participate in the universal breakfast?
They did. You know, obviously, not everyone's going to eat just because you make it available and it's free.
What percent?
But it usually tripled or quadrupled is what they said in the schools.
So if it's right now, if it's fifteen to twenty percent, you're talking about sixty to sixty-five percent?
Yep. Two-thirds was the average.
Yeah. So you're there...
But you know, you have a family that wants to eat their meals together. So now they have the option to go get a free breakfast for their child. So you might just be cutting into a family being able to do what families should do.
Well, I wish that was the story for the majority of our families, but it isn't.
But it's for a significant number of our families.
It might be, but I'll tell you, one of the things I like about it, and I've seen where I came from, we try to do breakfast with our child. And I'll be very, very honest. It's not that she didn't have it available, she just wasn't ready to eat. But by the time she got to school with her buds, they could pick up a little apple or granola bar or something and eat it walking down the hall. No longer having to go to the cafeteria and sit down and, you know, you get in trouble if you talk too much. It's just a culture change that we're fueling students. It has very little to do with money, although I think we're fixing part of the crisis we have where children are sleepy. Well, if you have no fuel in your body, you're going to be a little lethargic and tired and sleepy. I'm gonna be very honest. This is a push across the state of North Carolina, and I presented it last year. Mr. Menz is right. He supported me on this.
I was the only one. I made the motion, and it didn't get a second.
Now, you get one dish.
And it didn't, and we have less fund balance right now than we had last year. But yet, this board is talking about taking it out of fund balance. I wonder what kind of thinking the board is doing.
Well, we had, well, the same token. We voted last year to do what we did at Southern Florida County, and now a year later, you want to make some changes. That's perfectly fine. People evolve. People change. Yes, sir.
One of the things I did is I went to Subway Creedmore and talked with the owner of it. And he met with this Creed, and on a certain, I don't know what arrangement they have, but it's a certain day of the week, a certain timeframe, they donate a certain percentage of their profit to this cost. I'm not sure how Ms. Creed is using it, but I do know that they agreed on it. And this is one of the things that I brought up to Dr. Hulley and maybe about two years ago, is if we could start back this partnership with businesses and give them to donate. I mean, restaurants like McDonald's, I know they do a lot for the school system, but they may divert some of this towards this fund, just like Subway's doing. And all they're asking is that you just let people know that on this night, at this timeframe, a certain percentage goes to feed the kids the universal breakfast. So that was one of the things that I...
Your concerns are duly noted.
Hey, what do we got?
Just...
Dr. Betis, I've really appreciated your strong endorsement of universal breakfast. I wish I could get that strong endorsement for a strategic plan of which schools keep open and which schools...
I told you I know what I'm good at. I'm very clear about what this girl...
You are good at the other.
Alright. If it's not germane to the conversation, move on.
Michelle.
So, I think you're gonna share now...
Yes.
What the results of this process was.
For other groups. So we see where we landed tonight. We have it noted in priority order. Michelle, will you share with us one more time what priority we come up with? Not knowing figures. Remember, this is not figures. This is the answer to the question of what's important to this board for this upcoming year if we work to present some expansion items and what we have a priority order.
So, this group feels, uh, teaching physicians was the first priority. Social workers was the second priority. Instructional lead teachers for math and reading was the third priority. Additional assistant teacher positions was the fourth priority. And a tie between additional psychologists and universal breakfast was the fifth priority.
Michelle, thank you so much. I felt this was a process that is very fair. Thank you, that is diplomatic. And it allows everyone's weight to be valued. So, Michelle, thank you for that. And now, what we will share with you, Ms. Day and I, is to take a look at what our other committees had to say. What their priority orders happen to be for us. The first is the district. The district committee, and you saw whom that was comprised of, folk from the community, principals, social workers, guidance. You know, so, I mean, we had some of our faculty, ministers from the community, parents from the community came in. First, it's the same as ours, additional teaching positions. Second, additional teacher assistant positions, ours for. Third, increase in supplement. Fourth, EC compliance specialist, that exceptional children's compliance person. We have concerns there. We've got a training on Monday. I just want to let the board know. Because if our EC is not in order and we don't get it in order, we're gonna have a little trouble around here. And we, so for that community group, EC compliance came in fourth. And then fifth, the instructional leads, and we had that third. So I think it's pretty neat to look at what we at least had in common. Okay? Let's turn the page. The top five were our advisory councils. Let's look at what teachers said. This one will not surprise you. Guess what's first for teachers? Teachers! Teachers! I know, I know. Second, instructional lead and EC compliance were tied, and they could not break the tie. They wanted both of those, and they just could not break it. We had a really long talk about it, great discussion. But instructional lead teachers in reading and math and EC compliance. Then, our teachers were interested in that dual-language early program because we're bleeding at kindergarten. People in the community are not necessarily even trying us. So they're wanting to stop the bleeding early. So they talked about a dual-language program or IV possibility. Then, the increase in supplement, that was fourth for teachers. And then... And then fifth, psychologist and social worker. Comparatively, our principals.
Wait for you, that is variation that the teachers put supplement increase down below other things. That's, that's interesting.
The pair of psychology, social.
Well, okay.
Let's go to our principals. You could tell principals are all into who we can recruit, they understand we're competing. Look at the first thing on their list, increase the supplement. They know the other ones on the front lines with those hires, so this list didn't surprise me. Second, sort of like us, it's those additional teacher positions. Third, EC compliance. Fourth, that school-based six, twelve curriculum and data facilitator to help with middle and high school curriculum, instruction, data. And then fifth, TA positions to help in our, in our roll of grades. I thought that was interesting. And then finally, we met with parents and students together, and look at Ms. Day's face. You talk about an exciting meeting. Those children, some, one, one of them truly must be going to law school. Because when I say they fought for what they wanted on this list, it was phenomenal. Watch children learn everything we've seen from pie charts and where the money comes from and what you can do and what you can't do. And those children, I mean, they changed parents' minds, and they weren't their own parents. They changed parents' minds about this list, and here it goes. The children and parents together, much like us, said additional teacher positions. But they linked it to, while you're at it, make sure you increase the supplement so we can keep them. That was a rich, heavy conversation. I thought that was interesting. And then the dual language piece, Beth, help me here, the dual language and universal breakfast, it was just on everybody's list, it's up there. And we had children who said things like, I get breakfast, but by the time I get to school, I'm ready to grab something else. Or I get breakfast, remember the little girl who said, but I have a lot of friends who don't?
Or said, and said, universal breakfast because that would be everybody.
That takes care of everybody.
I mean, it was, it was really interesting.
It was powerful. And then the parents and students, let's think about who they are. They are our, that's our population that actually has the choice to go other places and to do other things. And they said they'd like for us to look at a code school. Speaking of code school, allow me to share with you what I put in your folder. You don't have to look right now, but it looks like this. I hope you all will join us on very first family code night. And for those viewing, if you don't know what code is, then this is exactly where you need to be on April second and April fourth. We have two locations, but it's for the entire family and anyone else in the community who wants to come learn about coding. This is what students will need to know and be able to do. And so they're wanting us to compete, they're wanting us to compete. We have coded right now in our district. We are coding in middle school and I think in some fifth grade classes, is that right, Dr. Myrick? We've got some fifth grade?
Yeah, some code and we're coding in high school.
And we're coding in the high school. They're wanting to expand this and formalize it a little for early grade so that we don't lose those millennials. So I thought that was interesting. So you have the lists from teachers, principals, parents, students. And then the next page is from our principals. These are all, Beth, can I talk about that a little bit?
So we, we did the same kind of activity, well, did the presentation to the leadership team, and then asked them to complete a Google form to give us their priorities and give us input. And so this is information, the other was from the advisory council, from the small group of principals, but this was from all principals that answered the Google form, and this was their, their top five, which was very consistent with the advisory.
It was.
You know, I thought that was interesting.
Take a look, increase the supplement is first for them. Additional teacher positions, have you all noticed those additional teacher positions? There's either one or two on everybody's list. That's pretty powerful information. The school-based six, twelve curriculum and data facilitator is up there. Instructional lead teachers in reading and math, and then that EC compliance was there. The additional items that sort of came up, like, like us, like we were asked additional items that have not been presented, here's a list of what came out of the groups we thought we were just sharing with you.
Where's the full-time bus driver?
Full-time bus driver, we have some bus drivers that run maybe just AM or just PM or have a part-time route, I mean, they have a route that maybe doesn't have a full load or it's not very long.
Or they don't work for us otherwise, they're just dedicated, so maybe they run two routes in the morning and two in the evening, and they don't work for us for a day. That's full-time, yes.
That's full-time. We have so many other jobs. And then on the final page, you will find our very last question, which, oh, sorry, not the final. Budget, yeah, but we have untouchable items. Look at what we thought would be interesting to share with our board, what others out there kind of say. This is what they're talking about, we hope our board doesn't touch this, we hope they don't touch that. Take a look at that list.
Well, this is the first time I've seen it.
And Mr. Richardson, I put it up there for you, it was on his list, but you're right. You're right, the SRO piece. When we received the grant last year to add to what we had, I think we have ten this year, and there's a little shared system, SRO did not come up very much this year in any of those meetings. You're right.
And that makes me wonder to, how much weight I want to give. We have a strategic plan out there where we talk about safety, and I've heard you talk, and you say that's my top priority, but yet, the message is not getting through.
Or it's not in the, you know, it's not bad in the papers.
Or it could be that we're doing all right, and we've been fortunate at this point. But I do think it's, look here, it's noted, people have said, don't touch them. If we have them, they're saying to us, do not, if you cut something to five dollars, don't touch SROs. So I think Mr. Mills is right, it's pretty powerful, it didn't come up in a lot of chatter, but when it came time for people to give us the untouchable list, they gave it to us. And then on the final sheet, we asked if there were other ideas or suggestions for efficiencies, just like we were asked. Look at some of the recommendations, I think it's worth, you know, just paying attention to.
Well, I'm a little bit off.
I mean, look, look, look at how creative some of this is. Some of it's just really good common sense that we could easily implement.
Make all schools choice, isn't that interesting?
Look at the four days a week.
Four day a week, yeah.
Look at that, look at stop training report cards.
Year for all schools.
Look at that.
It's a choice, unfortunately, but it's still... I'm surprised no school is not on there.
Yeah.
But we thought this year we'd do this process just a little bit different before we brought it to the board, so that we're not pitching in the dark as we proceed. So I hope you find this very helpful, Beth, I think there's one more thing for us to share.
We can give you the one pager with some cost information.
Let's give us that, high ticket items.
So these have a per, per position cost on here, and they're included there.
I thought about Mr. Mills, you know, he told us the other night at Butler School Middle, you know, tell me the figure, so now that's what we get to do. Think about our priorities, think about what people have said, and now we have the task of deciding if it's what we can afford to do.
So I just would point out, now remember, when you look at these costs, that when we take our position, we don't, it's not just the salary, we have to pay social security and retirement and health insurance as a supplement, so that's how they've been costed out. But any teacher positions have been cost out at a beginning teacher salary because if we have a program and we hire a teacher that is at a higher level, we will try to pay for that first, that teacher out of our state position allotment, so the cost to the district, additional cost to the district would be a beginning teacher. That would use one of our, our slots and we could take our beginning teacher out of local farms.
And Beth, I think we're missing, see, this, you know, communities and schools and stuff here, remember they made a presentation to us asking for fifty percent of the salary, so it wasn't in front of us tonight, but it is here.
I have a question. And the question is, and I think you alluded to it, and we saw it quite often this year, about being in compliance with laws. And I'm specifically thinking about EC. We had vacancies for extended periods of time, and that's the law. So it's one thing to have things that you like, and it's another thing to abide by the law. So we need to keep that in mind.
I appreciate that point because we, more than I care, have, have a situation to move EC. And we have to get compliant, we have to. So for me, the number six, and I haven't really given you my priority order, I know it's, it's one of the things superintendents do, we bring you, here's the recommended budget. But I did not want to do that without hearing from all of these stakeholders and then hearing from our board and what's important. And now what we're gonna do is I wonder how differently that list would look since we've got the money in front of us now. Does that change what we philosophically believe we need or would like to do and would like to ask for as continuation items? So that's sort of the homework. By the time we come back on Monday, we're going to continue this work Monday. And I want you to remember what we did here tonight. I'll have this pet forward, send you the priority order we came up with so that you can compare what this board did tonight with the other groups. And now you see the money with it. Now let's talk, and that's part of what we will do on Monday night.
One thing to raise on this, just maybe to help staff as you move forward. So many of these things are really, really good, and the question is gonna be, given the $638,000 it's gonna take just to continue what we currently got.
There it is, right there, that's the figure.
Yeah, the $638...
To continue, that, that was last year's figure.
Right.
Beth, do you wanna talk a little about, I think I know where you're going, Dr. Hill and Hand, but this is the most important part, and we didn't put it on this list, but Beth, shall you all, it was in the commissioner's continuation budget last year. Right, right. This year, we don't have indication that that's going to be the case. So above everything else, we need to be able to live like we've been living at a minimum. And we don't know what that figure will be, but we bet it would be around there.
Yeah, it should, yeah. Well, my, my point is to give you, in my mind, a little bit of discussion among the board in terms of balancing the budget this year and/or versus taking money out of fund balance. I know some of us feel a certain way, but I'm, I'm not sure. But I think rather than waiting until we reach the point about going into fund balance, to me, I think it would be very helpful for you to hear staff discussion about whether or not to do that. So does anybody have any comments that you'd like to share about that?
The, I'm, I'm absolutely committed, and I've coached this before, to not go more than $257,000 into fund balance. And that's where we were after we cut schools this past year. So with that in mind, we're not, and let's just, let's just say that that's the majority opinion. I don't know if it is or not, I believe that there's a vote for that. But one of the things I'd like to say to Dr. McLean and Ms. Day, we've been briefed numerous times on revenue, where the money comes from, the state funds, federal, local funds, the pots, the allotted money, what we can do with this, what we could do with that. We as a board cannot change that, we can't. We're gonna be given $76 million total, somewhere around that, and we gotta do everything within that. What I asked for, and Dr. McLean and Ms. Day provided me, was the actual budget. I've got all the $9,000 lines. There are ninety-seven codes, program codes that Ms. Day provided to me last week. What I would like to request, and this will come as a board request through the staff, in order for us to, if you want some of these things that we prioritize, like this school social work is personally important to me, we've had too many suicides and too many mental health issues. We're gonna have to cut. And what I would, what I would rather see, rather than our revenue, I would rather see our expenses. What I would request is that Ms. Day spend a minute and go over every single one of these ninety-seven codes and explain briefly what it is and what can be cut from that code. There's ninety-seven codes, that's ninety-seven minutes, and a minute and a half. But there's things in here like, there's different, several different areas where different staff expenses are located, low wealth, there are grant programs, different idea titled 6B handicap, transportation. There's, there's things that, that we're gonna have to cut if we want to do these priorities. We're simply gonna have to cut, and, and as a board member, I would like to know where the fat is in this budget that we can spend. And the only way we're gonna get there as a board is to understand what we're spending. And I, I've spent some time going through this, and I have a pretty good feeling about some of it, some of these issues, but I think it would be just very helpful to explain where we spend our money. That's all we can control, we cannot control how much money we get. All we can control is what we spend. And so I'm requesting that, if the board votes or, or if the board would like to do that, I'm requesting that, and if the board doesn't want to, then I'll keep allowing you to get our money.
Let me, let me comment to that effect. I, I think it is absolutely imperative, and as far as a balanced budget, if we want to do new things, we have to do one of two things. Either reduce our expenses or we have to grow the pie. And if we're gonna grow the pie, we have to look at how are we gonna afford it? And that's why I asked for a list of all the real estate and land, and said that we need to divest the property at Crescent and the annex. We need to, you know, if you add up all these penics, then they are add up to something. But otherwise, if we don't have any additional sources of revenue, it is virtually impossible to support any new programs.
That's correct. So, so let's just go a little bit further before we get into your decision. How do the guy board members feel about a balanced budget?
It's mandatory.
Well, I mean, it's always balanced, I'm talking about taking money out of, to, above the $257,000 in fund balance.
Why did we close Joe Tola? I've sat here and made the motion last year that we could take the money out of Joe, out of fund balance and support Joe Tola and Mary Potter, and the board said no.
So you're in favor of a balanced budget?
Yes, but not taking it out of fund balance. We didn't take it out last year, we shut down the schools.
Okay, all right. Mr. Udi, you wanna comment or you're in that one?
Well, what he's talking about was done once before. And everything that was brought up to the board back then, Dr. Howard voted it down because there was things looked at such as transportation, food. I looked for myself here, I couldn't find everything, but there was things looked at that could be taken out. Transportation, for example, they were paying mileage because the people here didn't wanna use the county cars because their cars were better. Which I'm going, we're gonna have the cars here, they should be made if they're going somewhere instead of paying mileage, it'd be cheaper. Food, don't need food, every meat, I mean, it was like $10,000, $10,000 just in food. And of course, Dr. Howard made the comment about the teachers' breakfast, but that was paid by the chamber. So it just, there's things in there, and I agree with you, that could be looked at. So I believe in a balanced budget, we need to cut some of that stuff.
And I, I would, I, I go along with the, the, the idea of $257,000. I think staff needs to know that because we certainly don't wanna get into a situation where we don't have to vote on a budget, it's defeated, that would, that would certainly not be appropriate. Rob, I will tell you that, that with all due respect, I don't wanna look through ninety pages, and I, there is no way, there is absolutely no way I'm going through all that. My feeling is that our job as a board is to approve a budget that's very clear, that's what the statute says. what the statute says. I would expect our staff to bring to us the cuts to match the new programs, and if they don't bring us cuts, then we're right where we are. I mean, Danny, you get into this, that, and the other, and I just don't think, I think they should bring us a budget for approval, and we either accept it or we don't, and we go back and make some changes.
Unless I'm reading, and the students can correct me, unless I'm reading the statute wrong, it says the school board is responsible for developing the budget.
No. The superintendent shall prepare a budget for the ensuing year for consideration by the board. And then superintendent files the public, I'm skipping ahead. On receiving a budget from the superintendent, the Board of Education shall consider the budget, make such changes as it deems advisable, and then submit the entire budget as approved by the Board of Education to the Board of County Commissioners.
Well, if that's the marching orders, the $257K is as low as we're gonna go, then we would, I assume then that Dr. McLean would bring to us her proposed cuts or her priorities, if she really wants more social workers, which I hope we do get, and there's not to be a quick quote-unquote cut from somewhere else, and then we would then vote on, or us voting to approve the budget, would be agreeing or disagreeing with your proposed cuts and what we cut. Correct?
I've heard very clearly from the board, we want a balanced budget. We will work to balance it, but I think we also have an opportunity, if there are expansion items for commissioners, that's what I need to know at this point, so that we can get that paperwork and such together.
Asking for more money from commissioners is not as different than a balanced budget at this point. But I think the message that Dr. McLean, you and the staff, I think are hearing is that it was agony to close Tola Oakville. It was just the worst thing I could ever go through. And if we don't balance that budget now, after what we did at Tola, I just don't think it's fair.
So?
So, and it's an unusual year, but I, you, least you know.
I would like, Mr. Chair, for you to give us some guidance, if not now, sometime soon, about going forward, because the needs are going to contend and probably grow. So how are we going to address those? If we need a boiler at Cradle, or whatever the case is, I mean, we can go back to the county commissioners, but operationally, how are we going to generate the revenue, the funds needed for the superintendent to implement a program that will be first class in Grandville County? Because that's why we brought you.
Yeah, well, I assure you, you said, Mr. Chair, blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
I assure you, Mr. Chair is not gonna tell you what it's gonna be.
He's gonna do a thinking count. Well, I mean, you know, we really, as a board, we need to decide, and if we have a strategic plan, we need to be looking at funding strategically. How are we going to, where are we going to be in two, three years? All we need is another unfunded mandate, and, you know, we'll be out of lunch.
And I'll be honest, the other thing is exactly what you've said, Mr. Mams. This year, we were supposed to put metrics to the strategic plan, but we've been really busy with reorg and country data, that that is not occurring, so when we do have to retreat, we'd like for each of our committees to look on the metrics in the strategic plan for that, for those areas. But for me, what is important right now is exactly what you've shared, I'm appreciative of knowing the figure of 257, so that we can do our work. But then above that, is there anything we want to go to commissioners for this year? And if not, I sort of need to know that, too, and we'll just, you know, keep it moving.
And you're talking about expansion items?
Yes, sir, expansion items.
Well, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know that, I think you should, I mean, if you have something that you want, that should be for an expansion, of course. I mean, I don't see, we can't get everything to form or need, is the question. So there's gonna be some things that we can ask for that's gonna be in the expansion, but of course, you're gonna bring it to us. So I don't know. All they can do is say no.
Well, will they increase, will the funding for SROs increase, or we, should we expect to have the same number of 10 next year and the year after?
I have no indication of additional SROs at this point. In fact, had we not applied for that grant, how many did we get through the grants?
Two.
Two through the grant, and in the county, what was that?
Well, so when we transferred the position from the Foxborough Police Department, it was a third, a third, a third, now they're picking up two thirds of that position.
So you bring us, if you, if you, you know, additional SROs, it's an important thing to some board members, but you've gotta follow what all the workers, is that what you think?
Well, I do. I feel a responsibility, in fact, several of the groups wanted to come tonight to see what the board was going to do. They wanted to know, and I said, let's let the board work, do their work like you did first, and so they may be here on Monday night. But I think the next important step is what Ms. Day provided, the last document, is for you to see the money. So if I say we need two reading and two math, we can sort of calculate what that figure looks like. And then if the figure is 257, then so what else? You know, because almost everyone said additional teachers, to reduce those large class sizes in grades four through 12. So is that where we put our money this year? That sort of thing.
I don't mind hitting a sore spot one more time. Dr. McLean, Dr. Winborn, I'm still waiting for the list of those critical and urgent things that we're talking about.
We're gonna make you very happy Monday night.
Well, good, because then you need to give us some more dots.
Now, these are current expense items.
That's right. A little different, like, but I promise you, Monday night, that is on the agenda.
So another part to this whole conversation is looking at our enrollment and looking at the trend of enrollment.
Yeah.
And if the enrollment is, goes down as it has been, then we will not have as much state money, which will create either, like Mr. Mams said earlier, when we got two things, either we can cut, or we get more money, or the pie gets bigger, we get money from somewhere. So if we lose state money and we lose positions, then either those are reduced, or they kind of go up on this chart as far as it's something to ask the county for, is kind of what I'm thinking.
And never forgetting that the first order of business for us is to see if they will fund how we need to live with those benefits and supplements and such.
Because that's just, for us, that is continuation. That is just not anything new, us continuing with what we have now.
So you all may look at me Monday, I will re-bring something to you, and you may look at me and say, you know, Dr. McLean, I think maybe this isn't the year to do this because we've done that, or if we do anything at all, stay in this lane. And then that's where we're playing, whether we get to do it a third time, to come up with exactly what we take from yours.
Okay. Since Mr. Mams said a sore topic again, I'm gonna sore topic again. The reason that I don't know where we spend our money, for instance, Wade County is not one-to-one on computers. They're not, and they have a fantastic school system. I do not personally believe that we can afford to go one-to-one with our middle schools. So I would like, for instance, to know, there's certain items in here that I would like to know, that the board, I think, should consider, some strategic situations. If we're talking about hiring more teachers, and we're talking about unfunded mandates, and we're talking about declining enrollment, we're gonna have to cut a lot. I mean, we're, we're talking, you know, we're looking just from what, if we lose 100 students, which I think we probably will, you know, that's over half a million dollars, $700,000. We're gonna have to look at some big ticket items that we cut, and I, if we, if we look at what Wade County does, I'm not saying we should do everything they do, but I would like to see justifications why we're one-to-one in middle schools, and how much that costs us. If it only costs us $150,000, then that's not a huge deal. If it costs us a million and a half, that's a big deal. So that's why I'm thinking there's some things that we, we might want to understand that as a board, we might wanna vote, or maybe it's against your wishes, but as a board and representing our constituents, we think it's important that we would rather see more teachers than more computers.
Nothing is against my wishes, Mr. Mams.
So, so if, if the staff brings us a proposed budget, and there are cuts in there that you think there should be others, there would be nothing wrong at that point in recommending X, Y, or Z, and then the board could approve it or not, because the problem again, if you want this cut, and you want this cut, you want, I mean, it'd be, it'd be all over the place. So let's see what they bring to us, and we can go from there. Okay?
Can we make a discussion out of at some point about the one-to-one in middle schools?
Is that, wait, is that something the rest of the board is interested in? A discussion about the one-to-one computers for middle schools?
That's a question. Yes, sir. At one time, the state was looking for on paper, that's why we started getting the computers a little while time. Are they, are we still under that deadline that they set forth?
We passed the deadline of online testing, so students should be using the tools every day, by which they're going to be measured to take the assessment. So all districts across the state were sort of charged with five a year such and such, have your students ready to test online.
And that was the reason for?
That's why a lot of districts did it.
That's how we went to one-on-one.
But I was talking to somebody in I.D. just last week, or a principal or something, this principal, and is the county decision to test on computers? The state is not requiring us to test on computers?
It was their desire to get there, but there were some districts that just could not.
Could not afford to.
They were much smaller, they didn't make the deadline, so forth and so.
Okay, okay. So is there interest from Mr. Mams, Mr. Udi, about a discussion on middle school?
Well, if there's a savings to be had, and we're looking for, we're trying to implement programs, so we need to turn over every rock and look behind every tree.
I think he was talking about having a conversation about the value of one-to-one in middle school.
I'm definitely that, and I agree, Mr. Mams, turn over every rock. That's kind of where I'm coming to go with this.
So where are we at state level? You know, if we do not continue down this path, are we at some point, don't we sort of in the dark, when the state says you gotta do it?
Well, Wade County's not doing it, so it is the second biggest school district in state.
Well, okay, so how many are in favor of this request? How many are not interested in this?
I'm interested in finding out more information, because I don't, I don't wanna stop doing something in, you know, a year and a half ago.
Sure, I agree. I agree. I understand.
So what was the vote?
The vote was three to two not to pursue a discussion of one-on-one in middle schools.
So, Mr. Peace, are you gonna find out what it's gonna mean down the road, and tell us?
We have, we've had a vote, let's move on. Anything else? Don't be mad at.
All right. I don't.
Any, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, one last thing, I believe one last thing, is I put in your, I sent you, as your chair, I sent you a couple kind of information things. The first one was, and I apologize to Mr. Udi and Mr. Mams about the misunderstanding on the infrastructure committee, so I just hope this is a little bit of a clarification for tonight, and I think we talked about reorg and the kind of things, so I think we're in good shape there. The second thing I wanna mention is, I need to, as your board chair, do a better job of following Robert's Rules of Order. Once again, when we had our meeting over at Gartner Stan, I really didn't, as your chair, follow the requirements of Robert's Rules of Order. So I just want you to take a look at some of the items that are listed that we should be doing, that sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. And if I, if I start to follow some of this that I haven't done before, I want you to understand, I'm not being ugly to anybody, I'm just trying to make sure that we stay management-wise within a board policy that we have adopted, which is to follow Robert's Rules of Order. So I just wanted to share that with you, so you'll know what's going on. Yes, sir?
You, I need some help on the previous question, and I remember seeing the car I saw from you.
What, what question?
The previous comment concerning infrastructure. Exactly, exactly what do you as a chair, does the board expect from that? Because I'm still not clear.
Well, read the paragraph.
Specifically working with the one-to-one implementation of funds received from the county? Is that the 15 million that's been spent?
That is correct.
So is there something left to do on that? I thought Dr. Winborn had already told us where that is.
Well, you, when we have a meeting and some project comes up, you'll ask a lot of questions because you didn't understand this, that, or the other, which is great. The idea was that you and Mr. Udi would be able to ask those questions upfront. There's still money to be spent, there's still projects to go out, and that way, you could then share with us at a board meeting the kind of things that you have learned as a result of working with Mr., Dr. Winborn, and whoever else. Another thing has come up that I think would easily fit under this committee, and that is, as you develop the plan for the use of the 11 million of the plan of the, I don't, we started the term strategic plan somewhere. Anyway, the, what are you working on? What's it called?
We will have a strategic or master facility plan that I'll be bringing to you guys Monday night. And this, this was sort of newest version with details and updates.
And the infrastructure, we need to work with you, with you on moving forward with that, correct?
To do what? I mean, the infrastructure committee has had no input in whatever is coming forward on Monday. I didn't even know about it. So what, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Well, okay, let's just back down. It's to work with the expenditure of the rest of the 15 million dollars.
Then, Dr. Winborn, how much, what is the balance of the 15 million?
So I think I had outlined that in a previous meeting where about 14 of it is generally appropriated. I mean, we're just going out for bid.
That's good. So help with the 1 million?
No, Mr. Mams, help them, okay.
He said 14 million.
We have, Mr. Mams, we have a meeting in the past, and Mr. Winborn brings forward different projects, the details, and you'll ask a number of very good questions. It's not money that's already been expended, it's money that's in the process of being used. And how much of that, in terms of profit contracts and so forth, have you?
We've written checks for about 4 million, maybe almost 5 million.
All right. And so the rest of that money has yet to be spent?
But it's, yeah, it's earmarked, identified, some of it is going out for bid, but there's still a lot to it, you know, there's still a lot of details involved in all of that.
Like what kind of detail? In other words, we need to know if there's oversight or involvement, if you have already pretty much expended nearly 14 of the 15 million bucks. That's my question. Do you want, Mr. Udi, to not look at the other million?
Then Mr. Win, Dr. Winborn just said he hasn't expended the 4.
But he has earmarked, he's put on, put slides up, five and nine, I don't know how many times. So that's, do we just look at the remaining million dollars?
No.
Okay, then when you decide what we do, I like that. Okay, then when you decide what we do, I like it.
Okay.
Sure. It was my understanding that the infrastructure committee was going to have larger responsibilities than what you were saying now. It's my opinion that we have so much on our plate, performance, finance, infrastructure, that our committees are going to have to start doing more, or the board as a whole is going to have to meet more often. One work session and one regular meeting month is not going to do it. We just got too much to do. I support the infrastructure committee being much more expanded than what they do. I think they need to make inputs to the board about which schools, you know, might need what, which schools might be costing too much to keep open, which schools considerably could be candidates for closing. Look at potential districting. Helping this, the staff has already said, Dr. McLean's already said, she didn't have the time. Somebody's got to do it. And if we got two board members who are very diligent and want to do it, then I think we need to let, I think, unless Dr. McLean can tell us that she has excess staff that can tackle some of these problems, either we push them down the road or we have people who want to get involved, get involved. Now, there's nothing I want to say. Just because a board member looks for information does not mean that board member's trying to speak to the board. And that's one of the things that has bothered me since I've been on the board, is this reluctance to let an individual board member or a committee go out and find information. When I, when I visit schools, I say, first thing, the principal, I'm here as an individual. I do not represent the corporate board. I'm here just to learn, just to get information. I think we're going to have to have our board members be more aggressive and doing more work and getting more information and bringing it back to the board. I would love to hear a report from the infrastructure committee on what some of their recommendations are, and may differ from Dr. McLean's, or maybe it's Dr. McLean, I mean, I'm repeatedly trying to get Dr. McLean to tell us what to do, and she is very reluctant to do that. If she's not going to do it, then let Mr. Mims and Mr. Udi do it. We can always vote it down. I mean, we can say, you're full of hot air, but if they're going to go do it, let them do it. Same thing with performance, same thing with finance. That's kind of why I was digging into this thing. I can't make a decision for the board, but I can come to you and say, I looked at this blah, 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 and this is what I found out. And you want to say, six one, don't do it. But.
Where, where, where I'm lost is, and I guess this is the fundamental, fundamental difference in thinking, according to the law, we are a policymaking board. We are not a in the weeds board. We policy, we hire and fire the superintendent, we are policymakers and we approve a budget. And if you look at Dr. McLean's contract, that's basically what it says. Is that not right in terms of state statute?
I mean broadly, yes.
So, for us, I mean, I know, and I know some, some folks like you, and that's, you're, that's because you're so darn bright and you get into the details and you love them. But I don't see how doing what you're talking about, doing this or whatever, is a policymaking role.
Then why didn't we even have this meeting tonight? You all went into excruciating detail about how much it costs to hire a teacher assistant. I mean.
Is that not a part of our discussions as a board about policy related stuff, I mean, related to the budget?
Wouldn't that be the same thing as, as infrastructure committee getting information and bringing it to the board? I, I guess I don't see.
Well, if this was something that is that important to you, then when I brought it to you for approval, as to approve the committees, why did you not say something at that time?
Because I thought like Mr. Mims and Mr. Udi, that that was their marching order.
And if you read that paragraph, what about that is not clear?
Well, first, you didn't have specifically bolded in the first fact. But then you said that the infrastructure committee will work with the appropriate staff to support, review, and recommend needed facility improvements across the county.
That has nothing to do with fifteen million dollars.
That's right.
None.
Zero.
Oh, it does?
It's across, across the county.
I guess what I wrote, I didn't know what I was doing.
Well, it's, it's three of us. No, we, we need some.
All right, Mr., Mr. Udi?
From what you just said, instead of you having committees to work on things like this, Dr. McLean needs to have committees to work on stuff like this and bring back to us. If we're only here to do the policies and the hiring and firing, I mean, to me, that would make more sense for her to set a committee, okay, your own infrastructure. This is what I need presented for. To me, that would make more sense than you making decisions.
Well, I don't, I won't, I can't imagine any school board across the state where the chair did not present to the board committees.
I agree. I mean, just on what you said, that we're only here for policy and to hire and fire the superintendent. If we're here just.
Then approve the budget.
Right, well, I'm saying if it's that, then I really don't see us having committees looking into it. She should have the committees and then Dr. McLean would present to us her findings on these.
Or invite a board member to participate, like the state could have, like one board member participate, but it would be to her benefit.
And then when she does her presentation, she can tell us exactly what she needs. This was part of the reason I didn't do the homework is because I didn't want to get into micromanaging. And I feel like last year, we come up with this elaborate plan and none of it went through and everybody got upset. I don't know what she needs to run this school operationally, she does. And I think Dr. McLean needs to just let us know what she needs. We can either agree on this treaty. But I could begin to tell you what she needs to run this. She might need more counselors, she might need more teachers. I don't know. I could go up there and put the dots on, but I may be putting them in the wrong spots.
I don't know.
So, that was one of the reasons I didn't do the homework, because I feel this is an area that we're just micromanaging.
And I think this is the fundamental, and this is why this meeting is so important. This is the fundamental question that we need to solve as a group, not just the board, but the staff as well. We got to come up, we got to understand the rules and responsibilities. First thing, and, you know, I think Dr. McLean annoys y'all enough and we criticize each other. I think it was wrong for her to cancel, cancel the infrastructure committee. She works for the board, we do not work for her. And I think we need to get this out in the open and get it resolved so we can move forward because we got a lot of talented, dedicated people with big hearts who want to do the best for our children. And we are, we are stumbling along. And I think it's nobody's fault and it's, we just need to understand where our roles are. I appreciate what Mr. Udi said, I mean, I agree. You know, I, I quit several jobs and took a big financial hit to put all this time on the board. I'm just spinning my wheels and I'll go back and listen to what's said and then vote and go back to work. So, it's, it's kind of, either we're going to, as board members, we're going to really do our best effort and we're going to be, you're going to utilize our talents. I have certain talents, Mr. Mims, Mr. Peace, former contractors, Mr. Udi, states, SRO. Either utilize us more or utilize us less. We're kind of in this, you know, half, half in the pool and half out the pool. So, I think we need to get that, because I'm confused.
Well, it's real, all right. The issue that I say it feels is that we know what we're supposed to do. Policy, budget, hire and fire the superintendent. But the truth is, we don't want to stay there. We don't want to do what the law says. We either want to micromanage on one thing or we, we just go on and on about another. Look at the amount of time that we've spent on some stuff. I mean, we want to micromanage as a board and we simply cannot do that. And it's frustrating that we can't. You're ready?
Then, before we get to policy, we have processes that get us from where we are to policy. Now, we're spending an awful lot of crazy time in this process. But if you think about it, whatever we do, the bottom line is, there is a policy that we spend time, going through a process, we get to the policy. And the reason we go through this process is to make sure that when we get to this policy, that we're going to vote on it, that everybody understands in other ways, what it means, period. All that other stuff is a bunch of crap. Now, we have to, we have to do a little crapping to get to where we need to go sometimes. And, and, you know, on the bottom line, and I call it where I see it. And, and, and that's sort of where we are. I mean, we have some important decisions to make. But you still got to follow a process in order to get there. And who decides what that process is? That, that's our problem. Everybody that wants to know what, want to decide what the process is.
Well, I think that's a good question. Who decides what that process is?
You're ready?
Mr. Bradford just announced everyone that Dr. McLean canceled the infrastructure committee meeting. And I, I'm not sure where you got your information.
I got it from Dr. Ghulhan, I got it from Mr. Mims, I got it, I got it from the email that said it was canceled. Came from your office. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Dr. Ghulhan and I discussed that. And since there was miscommunication about why this committee was meeting and Dr. Ghulhan would be meeting with the board only forty-eight hours after that meeting, he and I together decided, let's just hold off until you're able to get clarification to the board. So, the only thing I ask is, while we may be comfortable enough to criticize, I just think it needs to be accurate. I'm really worried that we're spending a lot of time around some committee work. Because we've got a district to run and we have assessments coming up. We have children who need things and teachers who need things. And if we were to calibrate how much time we spent on certain topics tonight, I, I wonder if we spent our time in the right place. So, whatever this turns out to be, just know this about me, I'm going to do whatever this board asks me to do. And you will never find Dr. McLean singularly canceling anything of the board. You're right, I work for you. You don't work for me. But by the same token, I ask that if something is sent out and we see it before we come to a meeting, that we just sort of give heads up, if I'm not pleased with it, so that folk can come ready to talk about it and we move on. I'm getting real concerned about where our energy is going. Not that I can do anything about it, because I'm going to sit here just like this. Just for the record, I'm getting concerned.
I, I would say it would be inappropriate for you and Dr. Ghulhan to cancel committee meeting that the chairman called. I don't understand, I mean, that's just, to me, it seems wrong.
Was there some misunderstanding about that?
I think there was misunderstanding about the whole thing from what I've heard in public and behind the scenes, is what I said. But I suggest we leave it at that before we go down a rabbit hole none of us need to go down.
Okay.
We, we need to get this resolved.
I'm not going to let the rabbit go down the hole until you tell me exactly what that means, because I do not understand.
Well, I don't have, know how to explain it any different than what's written on paper and what the board as a whole approved when we had our, our meeting. Now, if that's not something that you're interested in, if we don't need it, then let's just, let's just go from there. But, I mean, I tried to put this together. In fact, you and I had a phone conversation.
Yeah.
And I thought it was very clear what you wanted to do.
And I think the first sentence says that.
Exactly, but so, but then it all of a sudden, it went off into a, a direction.
I never said anything about fifteen million. It was the first sentence. We knew that we need, we had looked at the northern part of the county. Mr. Smith had talked about how we had all of the schools in the southern part and hadn't done a thing. We knew that we needed to look at the southern part of the county. And that was an attempt to do so. Nothing to do with the fifteen million. I've been asking for the, the balance of the twenty-six million for I don't know how many needs and still haven't gotten that. So, you need to give me, listen, I follow orders well. You just need to give me some clear orders.
The twenty-six million, from what I understand, when the commissioners didn't give it to us, that was gone. It was just gone. And all we got is fifteen million. They didn't say, but we'll take care of the rest later. They just said, you get fifteen million. And then they split that into eight million, an eight million chunk, and a seven million chunk. So, what we're going to bring you Monday night, and, and that was when I first came aboard, that was when mold was everywhere, we had bug up in arms and so forth and so on. That was, I, I started in July and I think we brought that to you all about August, September. I mean, it was one of our first orders of business. So, quite frankly, some of those things have been taken care of now, but Lord knows we do have a new set of issues and that's what we're going to bring you Monday night. Here's where we are right now with the ish, facility issues across the district. So, for whatever my opinion is worth, I do think we need an infrastructure committee to assist with how we get, how we target, how we prioritize this new set you all will receive Monday night. But I'm not the chair. And honestly, the chair does get to decide the, the role of the committees and what they do.
Recommend, recommend for board approval.
Recommend for board approval. So, that's just my two cents worth. We have a, the twenty-six million is gone, it's off the table. The only figure was the fifteen and we're winding that up. You're exactly right, we were winding that up. But there's a brand new set and we're going to get that to you all Monday night.
Well, then I would suggest that either we rescind that or you revise that and take out the first sentence, because it definitely, as far as review and recommend needed facility improvements across the county, it sounds like you already have a list of issues that need to be addressed. So, this committee hadn't been involved in reviewing or doing any assessment of needs across the county. That has been done?
That's my midway end. I very much would love to have some board input. When I, when I bring this, this document to you on Monday, it will be a list by school, by category, and then the year in which we project that it's needed to be done. So, it'll be a plan one, for years one through five, ten and fifteen. So, it's both short and long term. But I already know that we have more need than we do have money. And so, I need more than just me and my maintenance team and Lynn trying to make these decisions about what we do first and how we prioritize some of this. You know, I, I think it'll be critical, because I know you, you have, you've already given a lot of insight into this before. So, I, I'm very hopeful that it will continue.
But if you can't make a decision for the board, that's the problem. Mr. Mims can't do anything unless the whole board votes for it.
And we're only talking about the fifteen million.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, whoa, 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 back up a minute, because, say that again.
Okay, you made it abundantly clear, Dr. Ghulhan, over and over and over again. The board is a corporate body and one board member or two board members cannot speak for or make any decisions on the part of the board.
Correct.
Dr. Winborn just said he wanted board input from the infrastructure committee on how to spend the money, but they cannot do that and we have to all vote together on that.
He said, he said input, not decision making. You serve on the subcommittee or you, you've been on the, the school officer, I mean, and you're not there to make decisions. You're there to provide input. Is that not, because eventually they will bring their recommendations to the full board for approval. I'm just using that as a, and that's really the, I mean, I really think that we're struggling as a board to understand what are our responsibilities statutorily.
We, we are, we, I am very, I know the three of us are.
So, as chair, who makes the decision? Is it Dr. Winborn or does the chair of the infrastructure committee?
Make the decision, make a decision.
If it's input, who decides what input is going to be used? Is it the chair of the committee or is it Dr. Winborn?
Well, I would certainly hope it wouldn't be just somebody all, all by themselves. I would think you all would work together.
Dr. Ghulhan, may I describe to us what we're doing committee work?
Please.
If you all recall at the beginning of the year, I shared with you, and I did want to, want to just try, and that was along the line of the committee work. What some districts do is they do have a What some districts do is they do have a meeting per month just for committees, and then that committee decides what should go on consent and what should be presented to the full board. So that is that committee's way of sort of managing the information and getting information at their level. The full board still either has to vote on consent or they get to see full presentation and then they vote. So however it lands, the full board has to have the final say. Now, we didn't decide to do it that way, but we did decide to still go forth with committees this year. So I would think the committee could have full input, and when it's shared with the whole board, they will have your recommendations. Or am I just interrupting you wrong?
No, I think that there's, there's some disagreement on that. If I read audio language.
There's a, there's a misunderstanding. I don't understand. You know, maybe I'm just dumb and can't interpret the words up here. But I don't understand exactly what the infrastructure committee is supposed to, what product, what results should that committee be bringing back to the board? Just a list of where the money ought to be spent? Well, we know the money needs to be spent where the needs are. So what is it that the board, that, that committee is supposed to bring back? Let's see.
Support, review and recommend the use of remaining funds of the fifteen million yet to be expended.
But he said there are issues. They've identified where the money needs to be... That's a budget committee thing. If the window's broken...
That's what, that's what the original idea was, Mr. Minz. The board voted on that. Now, if that's not something you wanna do, that's certainly, certainly your prerogative. But it was certainly set up as honest and as transparent as possible. And if we have a disagreement, we just have a disagreement.
Well, but it's not clear. So don't hold me responsible for something that I don't understand.
I'm holding myself responsible because we're going off to the Milky Way, I mean.
Somehow, we have got to, we cannot avoid the elephant in the room. We have to figure out how we're gonna operate as a board, and we, we aren't there yet. I mean, I appreciate your, 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 um, remarks, they were very good. I appreciate your time to address this, this topic. But it's not, we, I have no more idea now than I did before the meeting started. I don't think you're... So we've gotta figure out what our roles and responsibilities are. Superintendent, us, each other, committees, the whole board, so we can... We're, we're all dedicated, loving people who wanna do our best, and we're just not getting there.
What I don't understand is we have three responsibilities as a board, as a corporate board. What's number one? Approve a budget. Number two, make policy. And number three, hire and fire the superintendent.
But that's not true. We heard tonight from Dr. Winburn about the landscaping contracts. Every, every meeting we get classified personnel, uh, un, you know, certified personnel we have to approve. We have to, we have to go to hearings about whether students can be expelled or not. Um, there's so much more we do than those you... If, if, if that's the three things we're gonna do, then that makes the four hundred and one dollars pretty much justifiable. But that's, there's so much more for the one. But if, if, if that's all we're gonna do, then, then don't have Dr. Winburn come write a contract about landscaping to us. Don't have, don't have Miss Day keep talking about different old budget, uh, you know, justification issues.
Isn't that a budget item, though? Aren't, aren't those financial parts?
You said policy, hire, fire. We do a lot more.
How would you all feel about having somebody come in from the School Board Association? Or somebody to walk us through all these things? Because frankly, I feel as all of you, I won't use the word attacking, but all of you stuck in need to know everything about everything.
We do. We look you as a genius.
As the chair, we expect, when you identify the committees, we expect you to clearly delineate...
And get off the committees. Let's bring somebody in to talk to us so that we can become very clear about all the stuff that we're not clear of. If the committee structure is not working, I'm the first one to say we'll get rid of it. But let's get somebody in here, because I feel all we're doing is going around in circles, and we're not getting anywhere, and so I throw that out as an idea. Comments?
I've been to two NCSVA training sessions to talk about roles and responsibilities. And I was not that impressed. So if you think there's somebody good at NCSVA, well, what?
I mean, there's always what's wrong with something. Why don't we do the opposite way?
I, I think, well, maybe each board member should like it. They think the board, the individual board member shouldn't be allowed to do it. But I think that's, that's, that's kind of it. Mr. Minz, Mr. Udi wanted to, and I, and I thought that was their marching order.
I know, you've already said that three times. I know what you said. That's not what it was for, that's not what it was originally set up for. But so, three board members thought that, Dr. Ghulhan? Well, it doesn't matter if the board members did. I mean, we're getting all into the... Sorry, my fault, I, I backed up. Do you approve the committee? I am not gonna talk about it again. I mean, it's just a waste of time. Mr. Udi, you've been very quiet. Have you got any comments to share?
I don't have any, baby, rock in this one.
Well, I can add one question.
Sure.
It's about committees, and, and maybe...
Is it about committees?
Yes, it's about committees, and I'll, and I'll, I will bring this up on Monday, so I have no problems if you share the information with them. I'd like to know if, if our budget and finance committee chair, Mr. Richardson, if he validated or approved the stuff that we saw. The, the information as far as the, uh, the list of priorities and the... In other words, as a committee chair, and I guess since he and Mr. Smith were the two on the committee, he's the, the remaining one, if he, you know, concurs with this.
All I can tell you is Mr. Smith was on it too, I think, but Mr. Richardson participated with the group. He didn't stand out above any. He really did a lot of listening and just...
But he, as a committee chair, I would like to know, get his feedback. That's sort of what chairs do. So I'd like to know what he does.
He left his list, and that's what we used tonight with the group. He just left everything to us.
Okay. As one final question of tomorrow. I've got a, tomorrow is a subcommittee meeting for the drug prevention. Just so I understand my marching orders. My understanding is that, and Mr. Udi's on the committee with me, and we're meeting with Dr. Winburn, and my understanding is we are going to develop a new policy. We have forty-three twenty-five, which is drug and alcohol. But it's only punitive, it only gives penalties. But we, my understanding is this committee, Mr. Udi and myself, are going to develop a new policy, a drug prevention policy, a draft that we will bring before the board, and the board can vote on it or not. And if it's voted on, it will be placed in our board policies and we should begin to review.
The draft?
That is...
Thank you so much.
That?
That's...
And that's, that's...
Make sure it's all...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, I mean, we're gonna bring a draft.
Well, we get to be a time before we get to the law.
Okay. Is there anything else on your agenda?
There is. We talked, gentlemen, about a spring retreat. And tonight I heard a topic that might be of benefit to our group. I don't know where I heard it answered. However, there was another topic, and that was training of the superintendent's evaluation training. And we reached out to the School Boards Association. They do have a module for that. It is a four-hour training, and they have some individuals that feel could come and take care of that during the month of May. I put on your agenda May twenty-ninth and thirtieth before I spoke with them about the fact that the two people they had in mind are going to be out of the country the end of May. So I didn't know if you have preferences to get with your board and bring us two or three dates and let us see if we can find a match. So if you, gentlemen, will just be so kind as to give me a couple of dates where you don't mind giving up about four hours, and then maybe we could have a lunch break, and then we could address the other topic we've talked about tonight. Or you may not want to do the roles and responsibilities. Your call, we'll arrange whenever this board would like. But I do know you want it to be a training superintendent's evaluation training. Are there any dates that are better? For example, um, what are your feelings on Fridays? Shall we leave Fridays alone?
It depends on Friday.
If we go with early May, and really, we will make room for you, whatever you need.
Dr. McLean, do you see this as an online module? Can we just do it?
It is not online.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Udi.
They have it available, but it's four hours, but it isn't online. Um, we can do whatever you'd like. You're already gonna be with me on the evening of Thursday, May second, and then on Friday, May third, Mary Potter has their National Heritage Day. So I didn't know if any of you were participating in that, but we could try to set up a morning or an afternoon, but it will be four consecutive hours. The next week, you've been invited on May seventh to the CTE tour. Remember when they presented? They're doing that just for you, but I've not heard that yet. Is our board interested in doing that CTE tour, where you can do the programs at high schools and, you know? They, they don't mind doing that for you. They've also put it out there with the CTE Advisory Council. They were very interested in being with you. They also put out that Mary Potter designed it, and they were interested. It just seems some of the thinking in the community is not what we're doing today. So we'd love to take you on that. I don't know if that's something, um, you're interested in, and if not, is maybe that date?
That's the seventh?
That is May seventh, yes, sir.
Then it worked for me, what they do.
It's a Tuesday, May seventh is a Tuesday. And we have a board meeting. We have a board meeting on the sixth. So I don't know if you wanna wake up early the next morning, or if you want me to ask for an afternoon, since our board meeting is that Monday before. Mr. Pishy, the Fridays are...
And, and the purpose, I have the CTE on the calendar, but... Uh, then would we be expected to do something with CTE or Mary Potter or... What, what is the ultimate goal?
Here is, the ultimate goal is to educate our board, our community, just people in general about all the things wonderful programming going on in the area of CTE. Several of the comments, we continue to hear some things we don't even know around here. So we just thought a day to just go to the three, three comprehensive high schools, we're only going to three, might be a benefit. But if it's not, I can tell them now we can release that date.
Which day was that again, sir?
It's a Tuesday, May seventh.
That was the CTE.
That is the CTE.
And that's an all-day?
It is all-day. Through all three high schools.
So what time would we start on the seventh, if we did that?
Here is what Emily Sue shared with me. We meet here about eight fifteen, no later than eight twenty. Both of us go to where first, see a couple of things there, then we head over to Grand Central, South Ramble, and come back. We'd be back around two p.m.
How many people are planning on doing that? It's just too much.
All right, so that brings up the second for you all, if, if that's something you have a hold on. I don't know if you'd like me to make out one of the dates we did with School Boards Association around the afternoon.
Name and which is...
I'm tempted, I may. It's too far out.
Now, what, what time is it if you're, if you're, of course, if you're gone somewhere, you really don't know what time they're gonna be doing the afternoon, do you?
Well, I have three calendars I have to... It's, uh, one is work, the last one is here. I mean, that one's my wife's calendar.
Yeah, I figured. We know which one's priority.
Well, you know, between doctors and, and practice, my time is, you know, mine and hers. And I was looking here. I know I'm gonna have an eye appointment or two. I don't know when they'll schedule. I know she's got opinions about her place and things, and I don't know what that is.
But should we just wait down to seventh and see what happens when they get closer?
Well, the only thing I can say is if I'm here, I'm here, if I'm not, they'll carry it.
Okay, all right. What time, Dr. McLean?
Let me check with him. Would you want me to take a second date, alternate date, just in case?
What about the, what about the ninth?
May ninth is a Thursday. May ninth, if that works for you, gentlemen.
But you said the thirty, thirty-first is our...
Of May, yes, sir.
So would now the superintendent's evaluation training is now off the ninth?
Well, the seventh or the ninth, if you'll just place a hole.
Gotcha.
Let me get back with the School Boards Association to see if it works for them.
Gotcha. Okay. And that would start at what time, on the seventh?
Let me get back to you on the time. If you'll just hold that, I'm assuming you want morning, is that a safe assumption? Maybe a nine a.m. start or...
I would think if Mr. Udi's working, though, it would probably have to be in the afternoon.
At eight o'clock at one?
Probably a four day. Just depends on what it is. That's what I'm saying is, if I'm not working, my doctor appointment is...
So let's do that.
I don't know when my wife's on.
Do you have any other dates? Try to the sixth.
So, 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 days?
I'll shoot for that for us, if that's okay.
Anything else on your agenda?
We had on the agenda that we were willing to do small group meetings around the budget if there was interest. I understand this board has historically done that prior to my coming. We put some dates here on the agenda, are you gentlemen interested in small group budget meetings?
You're not?
All right, that's it for me.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I take it back, I am.
I was confused, though. Yes, I am interested. I am interested.
We have some dates and times at the bottom, Mr. McLean.
I'm on my calendar, I'm figuring wrong things.
We have April ninth, nine to two, two to three for April twelve, eleven thirty, twelve thirty, or one thirty to two thirty, or three thirty to four.
I'll show you. You have a few...
Mm-hmm, if we have April ninth, one to two, or two to three.
That works. All right, can you, can you...
April twelve is now, April twelve, eleven thirty to twelve thirty, or one thirty to two thirty.
Well, it depends on how many people are even gonna participate.
We prefer two at a time.
Yeah, but I mean, how many other board members wanna do it?
The ninth on the end, yeah.
So would you two like to come together?
Yeah, well, they don't choose, probably them, but you can use...
What time, gentlemen?
Well, I think I'll...
Are we on the twelfth now?
Yes, sir. Eleven thirty, one thirty, or forty thirty?
Let's do, let's do one thirty. I jumped. Yeah, Rock, see, Rock called that.
That's for you to...
So I just do what he tells me.
Miss Day is going to send you gentlemen the invite right now, okay? And send it to me as well, and, and go on down.
And how long will that last?
Those are about an hour. We will add to you, um, agenda Monday night, that contract for lawn maintenance will end up to each agenda Monday night.
And Dr. McLean, I may ask, uh, I've been texting Jack and Sam, and I'll be able to get a cost analysis for us doing it in-house. Uh, hopefully, we'll have that done by the end of the week. Should I forward that on to board members as a document for you to review before the meeting?
It would be good. It would be good.
My sons are involved in this?
Yeah, Sam Clement and.
Oh.
They are your sons' names, aren't they? Why don't I say yes for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Definitely, if you're not interested, you won't have to, but Dan, if you can, get it to board members before my date.
Okay, all right. So I have a motion to adjourn. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
You said we're going to sponsor the board.
Yes.
I have heard.
And you know, honestly, I was going to come spell this year. I feel like we don't do it better now. But it's, it's the same day as the National School Board Conference in Philadelphia.
Danny, what day is that?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty is, oh, so this is Thursday.
This weekend is.
Yeah, I have three, but one, the one that asked me to get detained had to back out because of out-of-state family coming in, and her family told her she was going to die that night. So she had to back out.
Please call, so we need another player.
Yes.
Danny, since you're helping me on the drug committee.
I'll do it.
Can you spell it?
I am, I am average.
He's picking, Mr. Rivers, I'm warning you.
I'm average. I'm not a bad speller. I'm not the old, old guy.
I'm a thirty-grade spelling bee. Every year, we, every year, we come in to be the second or third place, and we beat the, and we beat the.
Don't you go there, Mr. Gimmies.
I'm average. So if average is good enough for, it depends on the day. I might beat that or some day.
We'll study up on the doctor.
Make sure it's the right day.
Medical terminology.
Which day, which time do you need me to?
French.
French, they got the French.
This Thursday, Dr. Wuhan, I mean, Dr. Winburn, what time does it start, Mr. Udi? What time will Mr. Rivers need to do it? He's going to start on the.
Unless you find a better speller, and then I'll, I'll.
On Thursday evening, six P.M. is when everyone's sort of getting organized, and it begins at six thirty.
Yes, sir. Thank you, gentlemen, for doing that.
Good.
They look for that. They do, they look for that. I'm going to hang around with the bee this year. And just pop balloons.
Oh, you're not going to be spelling?
No, sir. Mr. Udi laughed far too hard at me last year. We have, this is really, it's fun.
Yeah, I've done it before.
So my husband and I, Stowe, decided to go next to pick in a raffle.
There you go. That's right. Okay, anybody else for the good of the cause?
A reminder of this Saturday. Our second annual safety summit training. This will be about first responders and what to do when help is minutes away. When seconds count.
That's right, because the seconds count.
Help is minutes away.
And we never know, we'll be standing there. Could be one of us. So please call. We're at Northern Bramble Middle School in the auditorium portion, right?
That's where it'll kickoff.
So come around back. What time?
Eight thirty we begin, and then we have a breakout sessions, and there'll be lunch. That is sponsored by a company.
By who?
MC Sound, they're the ones that are doing our video camera.
It's a special reference for us.
Okay, she, you talked about training for roles and responsibilities. You mentioned that as a second thing. Are we going to do that or?
It's your pleasure, sir.
Yes, I might say, but I don't want to.
So we know that, we know that the superintendent evaluation module is four hours. So the roles and responsibilities training will be tacked onto that four-hour piece. Might we want to start a little bit earlier?
That would be good.
Okay, so we will do both. I'll reach them.
Then maybe you'll crunch it a little.
I think you had a little there.
Let's see what they can do. Okay, yes, sir. We'll do both. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn. All those who favor say aye. All those opposed, another prime meeting.
Thank you, everyone.